16, 2020 via Zoom virtual meeting. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public, but it's not a meeting of the public. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business, requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at a previous meeting or presented to the board for discussion this evening. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. John, roll call please.
Waleen Tangle.
Here.
Amy Bond.
Here.
Holly Stigman.
Here.
Brendan McQueen.
Here.
Damas Zirkovich here. Sheila Murphy.
Yeah.
Tim Oderkirk.
Here. Thank you, John. Is there any modifications to this evening's agenda? I have not heard anything, but I'll give any board member an opportunity to offer up any modifications. Not hearing anything. This evening, we do not have a student board of education representative attending the board meeting. So we'll go on to the next item, which is superintendent's report. And the first item under the superintendent's report is the Michigan Association of School Board Fall Leadership Conference Discussion. Every year, I'll do a kind of a feedback of the board members who went to the Michigan Association of School, sharing some of the meetings and some of the experience that they had. It was a completely virtual conference this year. And so things, some things had changed up. So for example, the delegate assembly, they were not allowed to have it because the bylaws did not allow them to be virtual. And so I'm going to wait a minute because on my end, everyone's frozen. And see if the system can catch up. There we go. All of a sudden, all the heads start to move. There we go. So I'll start. I did attend the delegate assembly, which was primarily just a review of some things that were going on in the state. Many of the sessions that I attended were kind of along a theme. I kind of chose a theme this year and it was a lot of it was regarding diversity and inclusion and different ways of doing leadership through that type of lens. And so it was kind of an interesting spray of different types of ways of looking at it and doing it, even through the school board and how to do some of that work through a lens of board members and leadership development. And so that was kind of the topics that I chose to listen to and take part in throughout the conference. They also had some nice speakers that they presented, main speakers about similar things about the drive of, you know, individualism and individual thoughts of students and how to incorporate each student as an individual and recognizing that need. It was interesting conference. It was actually a little more challenging being completely virtual and being at home. Usually it's very rich in interaction, which I tend to enjoy, but this year we didn't have that as a big of an opportunity. Does any other board member, either Amy or Waleen, have anything that they would like to share?
I can go next. I enjoyed the meeting as well. I kind of chose emotional intelligence as kind of the underlying themes of the sessions that I went to. I really enjoyed a lot of them. I went on, I went to some that were on the onboarding process for new board members. And then just a lot of things that are kind of going on and up and coming. I agree that the speakers were really good. It was nice to be able to still participate in some of the larger sessions. I too did miss some of the meeting, you know, of the other districts and things like that. But I thought for the opportunity, they did a great job.
And I can add, I feel very much the same way as you, Amy and Tim. I did attend mostly diversity oriented sessions. And I actually really liked that right from the get-go from that delegate assembly meeting at the beginning, the light was really on individuality and diversity and inclusion. I thought I was a really nice aspect. I actually, I'd never been to one of those. It was new for me. I don't have a way to compare virtual versus non. But I actually thought as a new board member, to see all these faces of board members from Michigan was really pleasant, especially as we feel so isolated right now. I mean, in my closet, right? And to see everyone else in their own closets was really nice. And so nice discussions on how to be effective as a new board member and coming in and supporting our district the best we can. I definitely feel like I learned a lot. So yeah, very positive.
One interesting thing, it's because you can see literally everyone in these sessions. I think there was about 500 people attending some of the larger group meetings, which was quite impressive to be technologically, to be able to pull that off and to get it to work as well as they did. But again, I'd encourage every board member to attend. It'll be interesting to see how they modify the future because so many people did attend and how that will move forward. Does anyone have any questions for us? Hearing none, we will go on to our next topic. Jen, I'll have you introduce Melissa Isaac.
Yeah. Well, good evening, everyone. We are thrilled tonight to be able to introduce you Melissa Isaac. I think many of you know Melissa. She is the Director of K-12 Education for the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe. I'm a great community partner of our school district. So Tim and I invited Melissa here this evening to talk a little bit about the programs and to talk about partnerships that already exist. We're certainly very interested in creating new partnerships and building our relationship further in the future. So Melissa, thanks for joining us tonight. I do have your slides pulled up, so I'll share my screen so that you can walk through it. Is that okay?
Yep, that sounds great.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, first of all, I would like to introduce myself to the board members that don't know me and the community that are listening that aren't familiar with who I am. Wabzi Kwadejina Koss, Nami Dodems, Saginaw Chippewa, Keenan Donjaba. My name is Melissa Isaac. I'm the Education Director for the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe. Just a brief background about myself. I graduated from Mount Pleasant High School in 1995. Go Oilers. I went from Mount Pleasant High School to Mid Michigan Community College where I got an Associate of Arts in Education. Naughty me, I don't know what their tagline is. I gotta, I gotta learn that. I went on from there to a Bachelor of Science in Education with the elementary emphasis from CMU. Fire up. I also got my Master's of Science in Administration with a Leadership Concentration. Also from CMU and I'm currently in the Doctorate in Educational Leadership program during a pandemic. So that's really fun. Let me think. Oh, I would also like to take this opportunity to thank Jen Verliger and Tim Oderkirk for this opportunity and inviting me into this space to engage in what I hope is the start of many more meaningful exchanges in the future. So I will get started. All right. So this is our departmental structure for the Education Department for the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe. If you see at the top, that's, that's me. That's the Education Director. Right underneath is the Assistant Director. We oversee Project Aware, which some of you have heard of and may be familiar with. Also, we have the Saginaw Chippewa Academy, which is a tribal K-5 school that I oversee along with the Curriculum Instructional Coordinator, who falls on that first tier, that branch there. We oversee the tribal libraries, which there are three satellite libraries. And then what we're going to focus on today is the Youth Leadership or DK-12 is what we call our program and services. So DK-12 is one program out of all of those there. And I would like to note that we have additionally acquired oversight of our early childhood education, our immersion, Anishinaabe immersion program. So we'll dig deeper into the DK-12 section. So DK-12 is funded partially by a Title VI. It's called Indian Education Formula Grant, and that's a federal grant. And so what this is used for historically, if you look at the data, indigenous learners fall well beneath their counterparts when it comes to educational outcomes and things like that. And so this is meant to help support those students and improve those outcomes, not just academically, but socially emotionally, Anishinaabe language and cultural needs. And so the tribe applies on behalf of Mount Pleasant Public Schools, Shepherd Public Schools and Bill City Public Schools as what's called a consortium. And this is not unique. A lot of other places do this because it's federal. You'll see Title VI programming throughout different schools if they apply on their own. So for example, our neighbors at Chippewa Hills, they apply for Title VI on their own. What the tribe does is they match the funds that we get from Title VI and then some. And so it really just makes a more enriching program where we are able to meet the needs of all of the indigenous learners. And they don't have to be just Saginaw Chippewa tribal citizens. Anybody who has any kind of ancestry with Native American or indigenous people and tribes. So what does that look like in programming? This is our DK-12 program staff. You may be familiar with a lot of them. At the top is Deb Smith. She's the Youth Leadership Manager. And she's the one who really facilitates updating the grant, reporting on grant requirements, meeting with the staff and is really responsible for what a lot of you are familiar with in Mount Pleasant Public Schools. Our team is divided up into different sectors and be easier for Shepherd. So we have Marta, who is our Youth Achievement Advisor. And we have Tammy, who works in the elementary at Shepherd, and Kim Sabu, who also works there. So that team of three rotates around through all of the buildings in the Shepherd District. Because Mount Pleasant is larger, probably all the rest of them work in the Mount Pleasant buildings. And we are very grateful for the space, the physical space, to be able to offer these services for our students. So what do those services look like if you're not familiar with our DK-12 services? So again, academic, cultural, social, emotional support. So we may do storytelling. We do tobacco offerings or SAMA offerings. The Native American offices, so the physical spaces. They push into classrooms to help students who may need some extra assistance academically. We have homework labs sometimes before school, during the lunch hour, and we have them after school at the different buildings. But we also have one right here at the tribal gym for students to take care of. Now, of course, that was pre-COVID. That's not happening right now. But historically, that's how it would look. We do have now virtual hours for our students to take advantage of that support and those schedules are public. And we really try to push that out there so that the students can take advantage of that. And then once in a while, we're asked to provide support for IEPs. So families who are going through the process, it's a little intimidating. I think a lot of you know that. And so they'll go there just to provide the moral support for the families while they're going through that process. Some events that they hold are the District Powwow. A lot of you are familiar with. That's the DK-12 services. They have tribal, community, family engagement opportunities and then also family informational nights. So probably about a month ago, they organized an event where families could come. Of course, with physical distancing and masking and all those other things. For anybody who needed help, maybe logging into Google Classroom or trying to figure out how to operate a Chromebook to provide support for that. And they're going to continue to do those as long as we possibly can into the future to help families out that way. We also do data collecting to inform our programming. So they will bring, they will provide reports on grades, attendance, graduation dropout, NWEA, all of those things that we can utilize to strengthen our programming for the benefit of the students. And I kept it short. I just wanted to give you a snapshot and a quick overview of all of the things that, these aren't all of the things, but a lot of the things that we're doing. And maybe to answer that question, because I know I'm asked a lot, why do they have offices here? What is this for? Where does it come from? And so I just wanted to give you some brief history, this program. I was trying to figure out when it started exactly. I graduated in 95 and it was there. I know Deb has worked for 20 plus years for the program and it was there then. So it's, we're trying to figure out exactly when it started, but we all kind of know it's always been there. We just have never known why. So that's what I have to present to you tonight. Do you have any questions or feedback?
Yeah. Yeah. Any board member have any questions?
I do. I wondered, Melissa, if you could give us an idea of how many students you help, like on a yearly basis, kind of what we're talking about. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that question, Waleen. So our number has fluctuated between 700 and just over 800 from year to year. Those are, and we can only support, well, we help the students who fill out the paperwork as required because it's a grant requirement. So any student that fills out that necessary paperwork will receive the support and services from the program.
And I do have a follow-up and then I'll let my peers take the mic if they want. But that's a lot of students you're helping every year. And I was wondering from a board perspective, is there anything we can do or help with to support what you're doing?
Oh, yes. Thank you for asking that. I guess if we just start with what we're doing right now and we start building this relationship and strengthening this relationship, I think that's, that's the best, most realistic start that we can have. That way you can learn about what we're doing. Like you saw those branches, there's so much going on. And then also vice versa, to give me learning opportunities so that we know, you know what to ask and we know what to ask when things come up. I think that would probably be the most beneficial thing.
Thank you.
In the same line, can you tell us what, what are the, what are the major challenges this program faces?
I think parent, family engagement, really trying to, I mean, that's a lot of kids and that's a lot of families to try to provide the best quality services for. Once we get them engaged and we start figuring out what does, I mean, it could change the way things look right now. I know when I first started, I thought, okay, we really want to be, help out because I have an educator mind, right? We can, you know, help out with the tiered system of support and do all of these things. But is that what our kids really need? So if they're, I think with Project Aware, we're going to find out that our needs are probably more than just grades and academics. I know that's what it's there for, but if you support them in all the other areas, that will improve that eventually. So I think that's probably the biggest challenge. I don't know. That's a good question. I'll have to think about that and let you know.
Thank you. The thought process is we know those challenges. That's an opportunity for us to help you mitigate them or possibly help in some way.
Yep. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Are there any other questions? So Melissa, I kind of have a long-term looking kind of question. So if you were to envision, what would you envision your programming to be in the future if it was excellent? If it was having the impact that you wanted? What would you like to see? Because I know that we've talked in that your vision is more than just the students on the tribal families, but the whole community of Mount Pleasant Public Schools and all those students. You guys provide a lot of things in that area already. And so if you were to envision the future, how would you see that for the community and for the district?
I think that, yes, I do have a long-term, you know, this is the pie in the sky kind of vision. I think that our communities have been neighbors and we have a lot of shared things. But it's always been kind of separate. And I think that once we can start to have those difficult conversations, and I think that if any time, now is the time to be able to do that, that once we get those discussions going, then we can come up with some real solutions collaboratively for not just our indigenous learners, but for our shared community. So the tribal community is something, the Mount Pleasant community is something. And if we can continue to have conversations and really get to the root of what is happening with our learners, we all have a long way to go, including myself. And I think that if individually we can admit that, then that's when the real progress can start to happen. I think it's just, you know, the time has never really been right to do that, but I think the time is now to be able to start digging into that understanding, that deeper understanding of the people that we live and work and play with. And that's kind of what I foresee going into the future.
I think that's an excellent vision and I happen to agree. I think we're in a great position to be able to move forward as a community and to support each other in this learning that we have. So we, there's been some conversation, just to kind of broaden this out to the board, of having a closer relationship with the tribe. And so we're actually thinking about the idea of board members of having a non-voting seat on the board that is connected to the tribe in some way to keep that voice close. Because we do a lot of decisions and a lot of communications through our board meetings. That the value of that would be great for our district to have that face sitting at the table, but also communicating at that table. Again, it wouldn't be a board member as an elected board member that our seats are. It would be a partner in this relationship. Like we have others sitting at the table and sharing their expertise when we're making our decisions. So there's been some conversations and doing that and launching that kind of a concept because of the value and the importance. There's a lot of families that are connected through that community, through the Saginaw tribe community. I think that it would be great value in having that voice directly connected to the board. Does any board members have any thoughts on that kind of a concept, adding that as a member or a strong connection with the board?
It's been mentioned a few times. I think it's a fantastic idea.
I totally agree. I think that's well past time. And I think it's just wonderful to have her here today making that first step. And I really appreciate it. And I think they're such a big part of our school and our community at well past time. So I think that's a phenomenal idea.
And what would the next steps be to make something like that come to fruition?
Good question. And Jen, from what I can think, it would be just a motion to add that seat. I think formulated in a way that the tribe can kind of choose how they want to have that person. Again, this would be a long-term relationship. And so we wouldn't necessarily appoint someone. We'd let the board Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe to recognize who they would like to be, that face and that connection. You know, granted, I do think the Education Director makes a lot of sense because of the expertise and the direct connections that we have. But then the tribe can make some of those decisions on their own, how they would like to do that. But I think this emotion to create the seat and the opportunity for the tribe and to offer this to the tribe would probably be the best mechanism to do that and to document this. So as we move forward through the years and decades, we'll have that record and when this began.
I'm wondering if we might want to reach out. Melissa and Tim and I have talked about reaching out to Tribal Council through either Frank Lotier or Eric Rodriguez, who are typically my two points of contact with the tribe. And discussing this idea with Tribal Council also, before we take a real formal step, I'm guessing that they're going to be on the same page with all of us, that this is the right time and the right opportunity to do this. But I certainly don't want to make that assumption without talking with them about it first. So perhaps that's something I could do, you know, in the next few weeks. We've got a month now between now, today and our next board meeting. So I could reach out and get their thoughts on it. I almost envision it as an invitation coming from our board. If we were to make a motion and approve it, then we would extend an invitation to Tribal Council to appoint a representative to our board. And I tend to agree with Tim. I think the Director of Education is an excellent fit. But I don't know that that's our decision, right? I think that's probably their decision to make. But so, so far, the conversation about this most recently has only been with a group of people that's here tonight. I've not, I've not talked to Frank or Eric and Melissa. I don't know if you've talked to anyone else. So I feel like that maybe that would be a good first step. And it doesn't necessarily have to be me reaching out to them, but I just feel like we should reach out and say, this is what we're thinking. Would Tribal Council be receptive to this idea? And then make a motion and have it more formalized in our board meeting minutes, maybe at our December meeting. It'd be great to have someone hit the ground running, you know, in the start of the year.
I think that's a great process, Jen. That's very helpful.
Okay.
Also makes sense on this end as well.
Okay, great. Well, how about I plan on doing that and then I can follow up with you all electronically and then of course at our next board meeting too.
That sounds great.
Very well. Thank you again.
Yeah, it's very exciting to have this kind of opportunity happening. And I think we can all really learn from that partnership. And so I just find this really exciting.
Does anyone have any questions from Melissa before we move on? Melissa, thank you and thank your team because we do appreciate the work that you do with students in our district. You know, we'll try to figure out when it started, but it's been around for a very long time and it's been very enriching. But as we have mentioned, sometimes it's misunderstood. And so I think more communications is going to help in a direction that's going to help the entire community and what we're trying to do and achieve here because it does very good work. And so thank you for all your good work and all the projects that you do and the Aware Grant. I mean, there's another great example of a project that we're in partnership with. So thank you. Thank you for taking the time this evening to join us.
Yes, thank you for having me, everybody. I appreciate it. And I'll look forward to our next exchange. Big watch.
Thank you. Just so everyone knows, I'm having a significant time delay. So I'm just trying to pace things out a little bit. The next item on the agenda is the requested financial reports from the district. Ginger.
Yeah, I have you the requested financial reports for month end October. Which Jen will pull up here for us. So this is for general fund and our special service funds comparing the revenue and expenditure budget to actual for the month October 2019 and 2020. For general fund, revenues are at 16% of budget compared to 11% last year. This is again, the significant amount of money we've received in COVID grants this year. Expenditures are 21% of budget this year compared to 19% of last year. For our special service funds. And the, yep, athletics are, whoops, that's a little too far, Jen. Oh, there's one missing. It's not interesting. Didn't copyright. I'll just run through special service funds real quick. For athletics, our revenue is at 0% this year compared to 9% last year. And expenditures are at 0% across both years. For the Children's Learning Center, revenue is at 30% this year compared to 37% last year. And expenditures are at 18% this year compared to 27% last year. The nurse testing program revenues are zero across both years. This is the program that we're, we are phasing out and just spending down the fund balance. Expenditures are at 1% this year compared to 0% last year. Our food service so far this year, revenue is at 9% of budget compared to 6% last year. And expenditures are at 16% this year compared to 4% last year. Again, that's a timing issue. SFE was brand new with us last year and it took them a little bit of time to start getting the invoices organized and rolling into us to get paid. And the school store revenues are at 19% of budget this year compared to 49% last year. And expenditures are at 10% of budget compared to 30% last year. For our treasures report. There's a general fund beginning balance as of September 30th. Somehow we're missing a page in here with two slides. I'm sorry. I don't know why it copied incorrectly from the PowerPoint. But for general fund, our beginning balance on September 30th was $5.8 million. In the month of October, we had receipts in the amount of $3.8 million and dispersments of $5 million. That brings us a cash balance on October 31st of $4.6 million. For the debt retirement fund, the beginning balance on September 30th was $1.3 million. We had receipts in the amount of $7,000 and dispersments in the month of October, $447,000. That was interest payments that were due on those outstanding debts that we have. And that brings us a balance on October 31st of $900,000. And our capital projects fund on September 30th had $3.9 million. We had a small amount of interest income of $267 and dispersments for the month of October of just over $1 million. That brings us a balance on October 31st of $2.8 million. Any questions on any of that? Thank you.
I only have one question, Ginger. This is our time that we start working toward an amended budget. Is there a plan to do that in December? Are we going to wait until January to do that?
We're really pushing hard to get that done in December. I know my office is working extremely hard on her evenings and weekends, even getting the salary and benefit spreadsheet up to date, which is the largest piece of this puzzle when it all comes together. So we're really hoping to push hard the beginning of December to get some new numbers out to you, because I know that's, that's something that everyone's really eager to see because our reality currently is so different than what we budgeted at the end of June without knowing what was coming ahead of us. You're muted, Tim.
I know the answer, but I'm just going to ask the question. There is no legal requirement of when we amend the budget in the middle of the years if we just choose to do it at this time, correct?
Correct, yes.
Does any board member have any questions for Ginger before we move on? Not hearing anything. Thank you, Ginger.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is correspondence. We have not, the board has not received any correspondence between our last meeting and this one. Onto the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, there are two items. There's the approval of the November 2nd, 2020 regular board meeting minutes and the approval of the bills and approval of the bills in the amount of $1,183,000. Wait, excuse me. $1,183,451.33. Is there a motion to approve the items under the consent agenda?
So move, Amy.
Second, Sheila.
Any further questions? Roll call, please, John.
William Pinkel.
Yes.
Amy Bond.
Yes.
Courtney Stigman.
Yes.
Brenda McLean.
Yes.
Janice Zirkovich. Yes, Sheila Murphy.
Yeah.
Motaker.
Yes, motion unanimously approved. The items under the consent agenda are approved and move forward. Next item on the agenda is new business, the wireless project technology bid approval. Jen?
Yep. So this evening, we have joining with us Carl Vanderzee. Carl is from Communication by Design. If you remember, we hired Communication by Design to help manage the bid process for our technology projects through the bond. When Ginger reported earlier this fall about monies that we had received as part of the CARES Act, we were able to look at replacing our wireless network, which we know is antiquated and needs some help and support. So Carl has managed this bid process and I'll invite him to share what we have to recommend to you this evening.
Great, thanks, Jennifer. Can everyone hear me okay? Great, great. It's my pleasure to be with the board tonight and bring the recommendation from the team to you. In your packet, I believe there were a couple of pages. The first page should be a bid tabulation form. It's a list of all the bids we received. We were very fortunate in that with this very quick turnaround on this project and an interest in spending, expending the COVID dollars within the timeframe that they are allocated, that we still were able to obtain the number of bids we did. As you can see, there were eight bidders total for the project. We had several folks bid the cabling and wiring piece and a little more limited number because of the equipment specifications and availability that we were looking for in the network, actual network components there. The team has done a very thorough review. I'll talk a little more about that in just a moment. But the award recommendation that we're making is for network electronics to the low bidder for the two categories of the network electronic equipment and then for the wireless access points themselves. Those two numbers of 86,26720 and the 264979264. And we'll look more at that in just a moment again. In the low voltage cabling category, we're recommending a word of the second bidder, the second lowest bidder. In the review of the bid documents and analysis of the work, we found several mathematical errors in the low bidder's proposal and the low bidder's bid, such that they went ahead and provided a written amendment to their bid that we don't feel qualifies any longer as the original bid. So they, if you take all the numbers that they had on their bid and add them up, it's actually a higher number than the bid that we're recommending, unfortunately. If you look at the second sheet, the Mount Pleasant team, along with our team, spent a lot of quick time and energy, but a lot of lapsed time and a lot of people were involved in really making sure that we were dotting our i's and crossing our t's. And you'll see here that we did rapidly create a bid comparison document that was very detailed. And the team in Mount Pleasant and our technical team went through it together. We reviewed the bid alternates of interest. Several bidders did provide alternates that had some added value or saved on cost. We determined that there were a couple of those alternates that the team felt are worth awarding and we should take advantage of in this circumstance. And so those are identified. There are the five-year warranty and additional training for the team. We held bid review meetings with the entire team, actually multiple times on November 13th. We had an early morning review. We went away with to-dos and came back at the end of the day so we could make sure that we had completed everything. And then we did actually conduct some post-bid interviews that same day as well. It was a very busy, fun-filled day to make sure that we had, again, all the details figured out. We then determined that the best combination of bids to recommend to the board for approval were those that are identified on the top of that form. The MOS for network electronics and wireless, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, with those alternates. And then the town and country folks for low voltage cabling. Probably is significant to note that the town and country organization, while they are headquartered, and you'll note the recommended board motion we have down below, is based in Zeeland, Michigan. They have an office in the Ithaca area. And the majority of the folks working on our project in Mount Pleasant will be Ithaca residents that are working in Mount Pleasant. So just down the road, coming up to our buildings to do that cabling and wiring work that we're recommending. With that, I guess I would ask if there are any questions or any clarifications that I can offer for any of the members or administrators?
Just quickly, what is this doing? I mean, are we, are this in the schools and the classrooms? I'm not really sure exactly what this is doing. That's all I'd like to know.
Sure, sure. Okay, no problem at all. So the, what this is, is to upgrade the wireless network. Right now, we have wireless antennas that are in our buildings that are scattered around. And we're originally designed and installed to support students having a number of carts of laptop or Chromebook computers that they would be able to use for instruction. The system was not ever designed for high density of devices. It was designed for coverage. So we were intending, when the system was designed, the folks who did the design work were anticipating that there would be somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, 30 machines in a classroom. But then the two adjoining classrooms wouldn't necessarily have machines in them at that time. So again, kind of the idea of carts being moved around. Now that we're in a position that we're moving to every student having a device, there are significant defects in their ability to connect those devices with this system that's in place in our buildings today. And to rectify that, we're moving forward with this design that puts antennas in literally every classroom and then in common areas where students are to have a high-density connection to provide for that, that higher density of devices, where we have literally about three times the number of devices in the building active at any given point in time. So that's, that's the primary purpose, to give students a good usable, for instruction, a good usable connectivity.
What was the age of the existing equipment?
The, well, it varies a little bit. The network switches, we're not replacing, we're adding to those. We need more connections for all the antennas we're adding. So that line item is not actually a replacement, that network electronics category that you see. That's an addition to what we already have to provide enough connections for all the extra antennas. The antennas that we're replacing are approximately eight years old, a little over eight years old, actually. Typically, in the wireless world, we look at replacements in the, in the five-year category. So in Mount Pleasant, we've gotten really good life out of those things. So many of the devices that are in place and still working today have been discontinued by the manufacturers for a number of years already.
Right, so this would then come with some added security measures as well with more modern endpoints?
Correct. More modern endpoints and some encryption capability if we, again, chose to turn all those things on. Yep, they'll be a part of the technology that's purchased.
Thank you. And Jen, could you just once again go over where the funds for this is coming from?
I'm going to have Ginger do that.
Yes, I'd be happy to. This is part of the very large CARES Act money we received on our August state aid payment, the 11P funding. It was, I don't have it pulled up right in front of me. I think right around $2 million that we received or just over. And I could be wrong in that. I'm sorry. I'm drawing a blank. But this money has to be spent by December 30th of this year. We already have the money. We did receive it on our state aid. So it's not a grant where if we don't spend it, we just don't request reimbursement. We have the money. We need to spend it or else we send it back. So this project is something we think will greatly benefit the entire district. It's needed now due to the additional online that our teachers and our students are all doing in our buildings. So we have the funds. We think we can pull it off in the timeline, thanks to Carl and his team. And it's, it's exciting to be able to do this with that, that funding.
I do have another question. Will this extend the range outside of the building as well?
So yes, we did add some antennas for exterior access on all of the buildings. So every one of the buildings has at least one, or in some cases, like the high school, a few locations where there are exterior antennas, which with much greater range. So it's not just, you know, 20 feet outside the wall, but really intended to cover a large portion of the parking lot so that, again, students or parents could come up during off-hours and in a high-density environment even be able to connect. That's a great question, yeah, but that has been provisioned for.
I do have also an additional question on whether the package covers maintenance cost or if the maintenance then falls on our team at home.
So that, that's also a great question. You'll notice that, that alternate in item B on the sheet that we referenced is a five-year warranty that does include all the maintenance. So that gives us a, we're in a position with those, all those antennas in our buildings where for the first five years, they're up there, which technically, you know, most people would say is the life expectancy. But again, in Mount Pleasant, we've been able to get much more than that out of our prior investments. So I would expect that would continue in this case as well. But it's a zero cost of ownership for that first five years.
So that, that covers the endpoints. Does that also cover the additional network switches? I would be in the, it looks like you're going to have to pull a bunch of cable in order to do this?
Yes, it does actually include the network, the new network switches and the antennas, Wi-Fi antennas, both, yes. The network cabling technically will come with a 15-year warranty. Not that cabling goes bad or gets obsolete, but technically that's what is in the specification and the contractors have agreed to.
Thank you.
And then one additional point. If we approve the bid you recommend today, what's our timeline looking like in terms of installation? And basically from a public's point of view, when can we expect the wireless to be functional?
Yes, so with the timeline that the contractors have committed to, which is very aggressive, we're planning to begin work tomorrow if it's approved. And that initial work will be computer modeling based on the building drawings or CAD files that we have to identify all the locations where antennas need to be ideally located. And at that point, after a couple of days, we expect to be able to mobilize the cabling crews and get them started right away. The cabling then will have to go into place to support all these extra antennas. We'll be doing that while we're waiting for equipment to arrive. The equipment is expected to arrive approximately two weeks after that. And so we were, we're expecting that in early December, we'll have enough cabling done that the antennas and the network electronics will begin going into the, the buildings and begin to be installed. The goal is by the end of Christmas break to be substantially complete and to have The goal is by the end of Christmas break to be substantially complete and to have the new system largely turned on. And maybe a week or two after that for fine-tuning and, and getting everything adjusted. But it is what everybody signed up for at this point to be, at the end of Christmas break, substantially completed.
That'll be done in parallel with the existing system. There will be system interruptions.
Correct, yes. As the, as the new cable gets run, all of that will be in place first, and then the new antennas become, start coming up, and they'll be taking over and we'll be shutting down the old antennas at the, at that very same point in time. So folks will be able to connect seamlessly throughout from the old to the new. There'll just be two different ways to connect. And in one building, it may be during one week anyway, you may connect the old way, go to another building and be connecting the new way for that transition period.
Okay, I think I'm really done this time. Are there any further questions for Carl? Carl, thank you for joining us, we appreciate it. Tech is kind of a witness for how many of us, thank goodness we have John sitting on the board. But I thank you for your team's work for moving so quickly and doing this and getting this moving forward. But again, board, the goal is, is this is a recommendation that Jen has brought forward for approval, to have new Wi-Fi systems put in every building inside and some points outside to support our current needs with technology for more virtual and more power to our students. So Jen, we'd like us to do a vote, correct? We are looking, is anyone willing to put a motion forward to accept that with Sheila?
Ah, yep, I'm jumping right ahead here.
Is it? Is that, is it second? I think we leave, or John, the second? Are there any further questions? John, roll call please. William Pingle?
Yes.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
Courtney Stigman?
Yes.
Brendan McQueen?
Yes.
John Mazurkovich, yes? Sheila Murphy?
Yeah.
Kim Motaker? Yes, motion unanimously approved. We accept the bids and Carl, thank you and move forward.
Okay, we'll get started in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us, Carl. The next item on the agenda, whoops, is the, one moment here. I have way too many pages open here. I'm pretty sure it's new hires.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we would like the board to approve three new hires. We have Sarah Kerr, who is a new special education teacher at Fancher. Fancher had her student teaching placement right here at KENNY in our, in one of our GIRSD program. So it was nice to be able to observe her and get to know her before we interviewed her and hired her. And we have Abigail McLusiac. Abigail is joining us from the Grand Rapids area. She is moving to Mount Pleasant and has some connections to CMU. And she is going to be teaching special education at Poland Elementary. And last but not least, we're excited to have a new choir teacher for secondary music. Her name is Abigail Ernst, and she is going to be joining us the week of Thanksgiving, and she'll be taking over the position that Mr. Simpson had. So we're excited to have the board, board approve all three of those new hires this evening.
Is there any questions for Linda? Well, for one thing, I'd like to thank Linda and her team during COVID, during all this demand for educators across the state to actually find these qualified and excellent candidates is very impressive. So thank you for all that effort. So is there a motion to approve the hiring of Ms. Sarah Kerr, a special education teacher? Ms. Abigail McLusiac for special education? And Ms. Abigail Ernst for secondary music?
So moved.
So I, John got it, and Sheila, the second. Are there any further questions? John, roll call please. William Pingle?
Yes.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
Courtney Stigman?
Yes.
Brendan McQueen?
Yes.
John Mazurkovich, yes? Sheila Murphy?
Yeah.
Kim Motaker? Yes, motion unanimously approved, and welcome to all three to the district. We are excited to have you join us. Thank you very much, Linda. Next item on the agenda is, back to you, Linda, is bylaws.
Yes, so this is our second reading tonight of our NEOLA bylaws and policies, starting out with policy 5610 and 5611. Both of these policies have to do with due process rights, when students may be subject to short or long-term suspension and/or emergency removal, suspension or expulsion. As you know, last month, we adopted the new Title IX sexual harassment policies, and the updates to 5610 and 5611 connect directly with some of the new vocabulary that we adopted as part of those Title IX policies. So the main change noted here is the use of the term preponderance of the evidence as the standard used for the investigation outcome. In addition, both of these policies clarify or add to the district's retention of records policy for these situations as not less than three years in an electronic or other confidential format. Policy 7440 is a revised policy that adds just one paragraph requiring that the police and fire department are aware and approve any safety locking devices that are installed on our classroom doors. For example, there are different safety protocol switches that we can use for a lockdown, and this would require the awareness of the police and fire department for those. And I think that's it. Those are the, that's the second reading, and pending any questions, we would like the board's approval for those.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to accept policy 560, revised 560, 5610 and 5611 and 7440?
So moved, Amy?
Second.
Amy moved, Brandon second. Any further questions? John, roll call please. William Pingle?
Yes.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
Courtney Stigman? Brendan McQueen?
Yes.
John Mazurkovich, yes? Sheila Murphy?
Yeah.
Kim Motaker? Yes. Motion unanimously approved, and those three policies will be integrated into the district. Those revised policies will be integrated into the district's policies and bylaws. The next item on the agenda is the big thing for this evening, the Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan. So Jen, we'll pass that over to you and your team.
Yeah, well, good evening, everyone. We're bringing you an update this evening with new information, as today was the first day of the second trimester. When we last talked about this plan, it was about a month ago. And wow, what a long, crazy month it's been. So I have a lot of updated information to give to you this evening. We have Mercy Stout, John Winkler, and Katie Rinkie also here on the call to provide information as well as Linda and Ginger to let you know where we've been, what we've been doing for the past month, where we thought we would be today, and then where we actually ended up. So I just want to start by saying to everyone that, that I appreciate your patience. I appreciate you actually reading and paying attention to the numerous emails that I keep sending, and I'm sure I feel like a broken record, so I'm sure that that's how you feel as well. But I really have been so incredibly grateful for our administrative leadership team, our teachers, our support staff, our drivers, every district employee that just has really risen to the occasion and really just helped us, you know, keep moving forward with this crazy situation that never in a million years did I think we would be in. But without further ado, I almost clicked on end the meeting, so that would have been bad. Let's get over here to my presentation. So again, this evening, we're gonna go through the same format and the same basic information so that we see some similarities here, and you know, when we're comparing information, we'll go through all of the data that we need to report to you. It will be mostly familiar to you, we've got a couple of new formats in here. And then we will talk about a recommendation. And that is one thing that I almost added on, on the agenda this evening after public comment. We may find that the board does need to take some action. When we created this agenda, things were different than they are today, and so there wasn't necessarily an action piece that was needed, but I'll let you make that decision if that's what we decide to do. So again, first of all, what we're doing right now is we're meeting our legal obligation for the reconfirmation meeting report. If you remember, the COVID Return to Learn legislation that was passed in August of 2020 created three basic parts, and this is one of the parts of that, that every month, we hold monthly reconfirmation meetings where we're reviewing our plan, we're reviewing how we're delivering instruction to our students, and then we're also looking at our two-way communication. So we'll pull this report up first, if my technology works. Yes, here, I can. It's taking a minute just to load. So this is our reconfirmation meeting report, and board members, you've all seen this. So when we look at how our plan is going to be delivered during the 2021 school year, this is the same information I sent to you after our meeting last month, where we're looking at the different varieties of instructional models that we're providing depending on grade level. So we have a section for K5, a section for 68, and then a high school and GI tech section. We have to document public comments. Those public comments haven't happened yet this evening, but I'll fill in the names of folks that do comment through our board meeting tonight. And then we look at our two-way interaction rates. So the last time we reported this, the last week that we reported was a week ending, I believe it was October 16th. So we start up now with the next week, where we're looking at how often we are able to record two-way interactions with students. The goal is to report two-way interactions at least two times a week. So this standard is a yes or a no. Yes, we hit two times a week with a student, or no, we didn't. There isn't a range, we don't get extra credit if we communicate two ways with a student 18 times in a week, it's either a yes or no. So you can see our percentages here. One warning that I will share is that the way we have structured this is that our teachers typically have until the middle of the next week to put all their comments in for the previous week. So if you look at those students who are recording two-way communication for 100% remote students for the week ending November 13th, I don't know if you can see my cursor there, but those percentages are going to be lower. That's largely because that information is not yet recorded in Power School. So if you look here for third through fifth grade, ending last week, we only had 16.9% reporting. That's not an accurate number, it's just what was in Power School when we were able to pull it on Friday afternoon. So you can see, again, we're doing quite well with our communication, making those connections. Again, the state has very specific standards for what qualifies as two-way communication, and so our teachers are making sure that they're meeting those standards and they're logging those connections with students specifically into Power School. And then there we see for 912. If you remember, also, the compliance with legislation required that we reported this information, but it did not require that we broke it down by grade band. We thought that was an important part to the piece of our plan, and so that was something that we added in. So now we're gonna talk about the second trimester, which began today. And so again, just to reiterate some of the fundamental ideas that we have supported all the way through, that safety is our top priority. Our COVID protocols are still firmly in place, where masks are required at all times for all grade levels. Classrooms are disinfected every four hours or after, after transitions. Our buildings are deep cleaned and disinfected on a regular basis, and our bus protocols remain the same. We offer support for our at-risk students and special education students. We believe that our instructional models are working, and we are looking still at smaller class sizes, even with the return of some of our Oilers Online students, which we know the plan originally was for some of those students to return face-to-face today. And we also are still really strongly committed to our families screening our students before they leave for school. We'll go on. So since our last board meeting, we have continued to prepare for the second trimester. And I'll have Mercy join us now, if she wants to just comment on some of the things that have been happening to get ready for second trimester at the DK2 level. Thanks, Mercy. Mercy, you're still on mute.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So thank you, thank you for having me. A few updates about DK2. We are continuing, obviously, to prepare for second try. I know it started today, but that has been taking us a lot of time to get organized and make sure that we were prepared for that to start, hoping that we would have our face-to-face kids today. But as you know, we had to make a quick change. And so we've been working diligently all day today to get organized for this virtual plan. Most classes in the DK2 since our last board meeting will no longer be blended. We do have a couple of exceptions. So two different teams within our district, two kindergarten teams, preferred to stay blended and went through Jennifer with that and had some good points and good information to share with her and felt like they had a good plan in place and wanted to keep going. So everybody except for those two groups will no longer be blended. The average class size right now is approximately 17 to 20 students that will be face-to-face once we have those coming back. And that has allowed us to keep the distance between desks in our classrooms between four and five feet. We were pleasantly surprised, thinking four feet was gonna be really tough to do, but as we got into the classrooms and started measuring and shifting things around, we were able to really figure out that even with close to 20 students, we were able to be closer to the five-feet mark. So we feel good about that. We have been working hard on a virtual schedule as well. Jen, do you want me to do that part right now? Okay. Working hard on what a virtual schedule, this is just a sample one. So they're all slightly different, but very similar at DK2. Knowing that we have a very young population, a group of students that have a little bit, I guess, less of ability to stay focused for too long and for long lessons and whatnot, and need a lot of movement breaks and a lot of things that we normally do throughout the day. So we created basic schedules, and each building is very similar in what we put in as our expectations and requirements, but timing might be slightly different on some of them. So as you can see from this example, the little camera off to the left in the times just indicates that that's when there will be some live things going on. And one of our goals at DK2 especially was not to overwhelm families with live and logging on numerous times. So not necessarily just live, but having to log on and off numerous times throughout the day is a little bit challenging for five- and six-year-olds because obviously they need adult supervision and support in order to do that. So we started in the morning, you can see at the top, we are all doing a, basically a morning meeting where they will log on, teacher will greet them for the morning, it could include a read aloud, it could include a fun game. Our second step, social-emotional curriculum, could be a lesson that they do at that time. Those are just some examples of what they may do. And then for the most part, they're going right into a lesson. And in this particular schedule, this is a teacher-led math lesson. And as the teachers do those lessons, they may also call small groups afterwards. So maybe they would keep four kids, and the other 17 or 18 would log off, go do some independent work, and even some computer work, like math seeds you can see listed there as some independent work that may be assigned to them to be able to do after they have participated in the lesson. to be able to do after they have participated in the lesson. And then in the next half hour, you can see that that's not necessarily live. So they would get on their slideshow or in their Google Classroom. And they, in this particular case, would watch a reading lesson that had been recorded, but had independent lessons to go along with it. Particularly some things in our Journeys program that would be maybe some workbook pages or things they would have done in the classroom, things that they can do independently. And then again, they would come back on live. So now this is twice that they've logged on. This would be a teacher-led example. This one's funny, Make Awareness Sight Words, so more English language, language arts. Again, some small group and independent work would be part of that as well. And after that, it looks like, I think, if you scroll down, Jen, I think we were, yeah, that next little area would be lunch. So just putting in a time that we were hoping they would get some outside time, lunch break, of course, and just some downtime. After lunch, this schedule shows that they would watch a Journeys writing lesson and do some independent work along with that. And what I want to point out is that a lot of these videos that they would watch that are recorded by the teachers, the teachers are then following up with those students or with all the students in small groups throughout the week. So it's not just that they're posting a video and the kids watch it and do their work and that's the end of that. So as you see throughout everyone's schedule, they have small group time, or there might even be time where they might work with just one student who was struggling in a certain area, or maybe one that needs some extension or enrichment lessons as well. The afternoon, we kind of, for the most part at DK2, have set up where they would watch any of the specials videos that are posted. So their art videos, their PE videos, computers, music, also science or social studies or mindfulness on whichever day might be assigned to them. They can then choose families. We put a timeframe on there, but families can choose whatever works for them. If that timeframe one to two works, great to watch the science video and one of the PE videos, then that's awesome. But if it doesn't, those are all recorded and families could choose to watch those a little bit later or in the evening or something if that worked better with their schedule. The other thing that a lot of our teachers have included is this choice board. What they've done is sort of give, because in DK2, we do give a lot of choice throughout the day. We might call them stations or centers or things like that. But the kids move around and do some different activities. And so this choice board each week would have options. Some are reading eggs, math seeds. Those are obviously computer-related. Getting on Epic with your class code and listening to stories. This particular one I thought was cute because they decided to do an author study each week. And so Eric Carl will be the first author. And so on the next slide, you'll see the Eric Carl's virtual classroom. And so all of the books that you see pictured here, when you click on those in YouTube, they will read the story to the kids so they can pick what they want to listen to or anything like that. So that's pretty much the layout of the day. We are trying our hardest to limit the number of times that kids have to log on and off, on and off, on and off at our level because, again, like I said, they need so much support with that. And parents have, some of them have two or three kids at home that they're doing this with. So we're trying to make it as family-friendly as possible. I think I, yeah, the next one. Perfect. So we did have a little practice at this at Gannyard. We had a kindergarten class that you know had to quarantine for two weeks, kind of on quick notice on a Sunday after Halloween. And that teacher, Mrs. Schaefer, jumped right in and got things figured out for her families. And she did get a lot of feedback, which was really helpful to us as a group when we were making our plans. And a lot of the feedback that she received was that they really appreciated the communication daily, that they knew they could reach out to their teacher if they were confused, if they were lost, if they couldn't log in. They always had a way to communicate with their teacher and that the directions were clear and concise. So that was supportive. Also, they felt like the instruction was really engaging and it was appropriate for kindergarten students. So the right timeframes, the right length of the lessons, the required work and such that were assigned. They felt like that was very fair and doable for the family. They felt like the instruction allowed their child to be engaged, but also not, like I mentioned earlier, not logging on and off all day long. Again, that becomes a challenge for families. And so that was one thing that parents mentioned. And as you saw back in our schedule, we kind of tied our morning meeting in with a lesson right away. So in some cases, it's, oh, we move right into math, or in some cases, we might move right into reading. But it helps us just to get that one login time and keep them for the timeframe that works best. They really appreciated small group time. So the teacher might have only had four, four or five kids at a time to do some extra work with. And the parents really felt like that was extremely valuable. As much as they liked the videos they could watch and the live lessons where everybody's there and they get to see their friends, they really felt like that individualized instruction was extremely important at this level. And they were very happy and supportive that we were able to do that. What we've done the last few weeks to prepare for virtual was making sure, of course, all of our kids had their logins and passwords, that we were sending all of those home. We have been working diligently, even in our DK room, to have our students log in and practice navigating Google Classroom and Seesaw with their teachers. That's been a challenge, to say the least. Our computer teachers have been helping with that as well. But classroom teachers have had the Chromebooks out and had everybody practicing together. We have shared tutorial videos with families of different Google Classroom pieces and Seesaw pieces of logging in, submitting work, checking for feedback, all of those important aspects of those programs. Students have actually been given assignments and completed those assignments in Google Classroom within the face-to-face classroom as practice so that the teacher can see, you know, where they might be struggling, what the greatest hurdles were, so that they could really roll out a good plan for them when they were completely virtual, which happened quicker than we thought. So we feel very, very good that we have been practicing and working on this with our, our classrooms. We've had a lot of PD and planning time for teachers. We've utilized staff meeting time, professional learning time that the teachers have weekly. We have allotted that for virtual planning and collaborating with their grade mates. That's another important aspect of what we've been able to do. And we've been allow, able to allow them to work closely together with their grade mates in order to make these plans, share videos, share work, trying to work a lot smarter and not harder and really doing that collaboratively. That's going to be, I think, the good thing moving forward. Even though we don't have our kids with us in the building, the teachers are able to work together. And I feel like we're getting something amazing out of that as far as the teaching goes, because I feel like they can really share ideas and help each other out as needed so that, that all of our families are getting what they need. And that's something that is really important to us, the collaboration piece. So we're happy that we're able to still continue to do that while we are virtual. I think that's it as far as DK2. I don't know if you want to do questions now or at the end. Jen, what do you?
Thanks, Marcy. I think we'll go through all of our presentation, if that's okay with the board, and then do questions at the end. Does that sound all right? Okay. So next, then I will invite Katie to talk about third through fifth grade.
All right. Can everyone hear me? Okay. All right, good. We like it when the Wi-Fi is working. So, good evening. I'm Katie Rinkie, the principal at Fancher Elementary, one of our third through fifth grade buildings. So what we have been working diligently at, at the third through fifth level is similar to what Marcy just shared with the DK2 buildings. We have been working on updating our class lists and making sure our class sizes are balanced and not only with number of students, but academic needs. And that has, you know, been an influx and changed constantly with what parents are deciding to do. But we have a solid plan there. We've been preparing our classrooms as well as DK2 with measuring and adding student desks. Same with DK2. We, with McGuire and Fancher, we are in that four feet to five-foot range in all of our classrooms. At McGuire, fifth grade with the number of students, they're closer to the four feet. And Fancher's third grade is closer to four feet, social distancing. With our, with Fancher's fourth and fifth and McGuire's third and fourth at five feet, just under the six, close to five feet. So that's where we're at with our numbers and spacing there. We also have been giving teachers time to plan, providing professional development when it comes to technology. That's been from the start of the year, but just on Election Day, we took that afternoon to really give teachers time to work with their colleagues, the online Oilers, the Oilers online teachers who have been teaching virtually all trimester. So they are the experts and have done an awesome job and done an awesome job in supporting their face-to-face colleagues. So we spent that afternoon working with them on a schedule, on how they set their day. We had some PD on how to use the hover cam again, just revisiting some of those tools. Maybe we weren't able to do in the beginning with such a busy school year. And then just like Marcy said, we are giving them PLC time. We've taken some staff meeting time to give them for planning and work time there. So we have been communicating consistently with families as far as what the plans look like for transitioning their students back. So we have, at Fancher, we have about 36 students returning to us from online. So both McGuire and Fancher students receive welcome letters. We've updated them via email since Fancher just went virtual last week. So some of the changes there, we've sent Power School calls and text messages. So we tried to keep our families informed. We also have that virtual learning schedule. Jen, if you want to pull that up. So this one was specifically Fancher since we went virtual as of last Tuesday. So if you want to scroll down to the second page there. So Fancher, we got a head start here on what that virtual learning looked like as we're now in our second week for the full school to be virtual. So ours also looks similar to DK2 with your live morning meeting. We're engaging students right from the get-go in the morning. We have a live ELA, live math. And then the afternoon looks like more recorded time. So if you scroll down there a little bit, Jen, we are providing recorded specials courses, which has been consistent with what our Oilers online have been receiving. We have recorded science, social studies. And then the afternoons allow teachers time, obviously, for, for planning and preparation, but then also to meet students in small groups. So maybe small groups or one-on-one, one-on-one time. And then we also check out with all of our students at the end of the day. The check-in and checkout, I think, are really crucial for our third through fifth graders and just making sure they understand the learning goals for the day, the homework, checking back in at the end of the day to see if they've accomplished all of their tasks, if they have questions, how they're feeling, just another touch point for our students. If you scroll up, Wednesdays look a little different for third through fifth, and we're modeling this off of our current Oilers online teachers. So we found Wednesdays to work really well to have a flexible schedule. So we are focusing very much on social emotional learning. So Wednesdays, our students are participating in a social emotional lesson, thanks to our counselors. And then they have some independent work time. They have some independent reading. They might be catching up on a writing task or a project that's taking them longer. And then if you scroll down there, again, Jen, thanks. And then in the afternoon, our students are receiving mindfulness. And our librarian, now that we're all virtual, will also be recording a book that she is reading to the students. So Wednesdays are a little more flexible. It's allowing for more one-on-one, small group time, planning time for teachers, and focusing solely on that social emotional piece. So that's what our schedule looks like. And then Fancher, we had our virtual pickup materials, Chromebooks, last Tuesday. McGuire's is tomorrow. We are continuing to support our staff with onsite technology support from Joyce, from Joe, from our computer teachers, Jill Jacobowski, Kate Worzing, and, and then other local experts, like staff who are learning these tools and implementing them. So I know this week at Fancher, for example, we're offering a few more sessions on how to create virtual assessments, since that's kind of a new territory. Teachers are trying to figure out how to successfully assess our students with fidelity online and transitioning their assessments online. So we're providing Tuesday, Thursday sessions during the day for teachers here at Fancher. With our changes and students coming back, we are able to reduce our online sections to more like 27 to 30 students. They were at, they're currently at 36 to 42. So moving our students back face-to-face to new teachers will be at the 27 to 30 student mark, which I think will be much more manageable. Our fourth and fifth grade caps are 29 students and our third grade is 27. So that is closely aligned to what they typically would have in a school year. You'll see below that table, with our kids moving back, I know some board members had asked previously about the measurement, but also the class sizes. So that is looking at both Fancher and McGuire. That's about an average. So our third grade, we're looking at roughly 22 students. Our fourth grades across both buildings, anywhere from 20 to 22 students. And our fifth grade, 20 to 24 students. And then just to speak a little more closely to what, how Fancher transitioned last week, it was definitely an all-hands-on-deck team effort. And I'm just so thankful for my fabulous staff and how hardworking they are. Everyone came together from support staff to certified teachers. And we were able to, on that Tuesday, hand out 250 student bags of materials. With SFE and our local cooks here, too, we were able to hand out 100 meals while parents were picking up the materials. So we had three breakfasts prepared, three lunches prepared. And so it was a good feeling to be able to hand meals to families who knew they would be home for the next three to four days. And then we handed out 157 Chromebooks to students. So that all was quite an undertaking and an accomplishment, but I think it ran very smoothly for our three-to-four-hour window time of pickup. And like I said, my staff was working so hard, running in and out with bags and Chromebooks and radioing. We need this student's materials. And I just also appreciate how patient and understanding families were. We've received a lot of positive feedback from the materials pickup day, as well as just how online learning is going. Some of the feedback that we have received is families just very much appreciate the schedule. So every family went home that day with a hard copy of the schedule and their login information. They are really appreciating the live instruction and access to the teacher for learning. I know with the spring, it was packets and maybe not as much interaction, but we, we really are trying to keep learning going and students growing and engaged. I've also heard from many of my staff that students who have struggled so far this school year in the traditional setting in their classroom are actually excelling and engaging and completing work more than they were in face-to-face here at Fancher. So that, that's encouraging as well. We, our attendance has been excellent. I know that two-way log is not up to date on our sheet and that does not represent our engagement we've had. But most teachers have had almost full attendance, maybe one or two students missing. And then they're doing an excellent job of calling or emailing and checking in with families who might not be online. And so we're troubleshooting with families, but attendance has been excellent. And, you know, our students have been prepared for this transition. I, I think we were all kind of waiting in the Fancher office to have the phone ringing off the hook on Wednesday morning when we started on our full virtual schedule. But it was quiet for about two hours without any calls. And I just think that- And I just think that goes to show you how hard our teachers have been preparing students while we've had them face to face. It also attributes to our Oilers online teachers who have been working so diligently teaching all semester online. They've really taught their colleagues, you know, the pros and cons, this works, this doesn't. And so I'm just really proud of my staff and our students because they have definitely been engaged and focused on, okay, this is how I log in, and this is where I go to turn on an assignment. So it really has been a smooth transition for us. So I think that is all. Thank you.
Very great. Thank you, Katie. I'll talk a little bit about the middle school Darby was unable to join us this evening. They, too, have been working for the last month to get ready for the start of the second trimester. They continue to transition students from the Oilers online program into a face to face returning schedule. They continue to work on improving their two way communication. One of the big focuses there is offering counseling support to connect with students and families that that they feel like aren't currently connecting with. So our counselors have reached out to teachers saying, give us the names of students you're not hearing from. We will take them on as our cases and we'll really work with them so that we can make sure that those connections are there and are important. At our last board meeting, you did ask about social distancing. And at this time, according to Darby, they have two class periods that will have less than six feet, but not less than four feet social distancing. So remember, as they move through periods, you know, the groups stay together. So there's two class periods where the classrooms are smaller and they'll be a little bit tighter. They do have a virtual schedule also. The intent of this schedule is for the virtual Wednesdays. I don't know how well you can read that. It looks a little small on my on my computer, but certainly this was what they had put in place prior to our shift over the weekend. So I know this has been communicated to families through the wag so that they know what to expect and that they're prepared and ready to go. I lost that. Sorry. Having I need to get back to my PowerPoint there. Sorry. Oops. In addition to that, they are also working on additional professional development for staff on remote instruction. We've talked often about all of the remote instruction essentials that our staff has been offered as far as training goes this year. That training is all coordinated by Communication by Design, which is an organization that Carl represents. They have two arms of the organization. One is doing the hardware and the projects. The other is offering professional development and training. So it's a high quality, a lot of expertise that our teachers have been able to benefit from. And they'll begin offering some of that professional development for their staff also on Wednesday mornings. Move on here. John is here with us this evening to update us on the high school. John, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having me here tonight. The high school is going to continue with their blue and gold cohort hybrid model. It's been very successful for us so far. Lot of that has been due to the hard work of our teachers, our staff, and the hard work of our students also. And so that's kind of made it successful for us. One of the things we've used kind of the first trimester here for is to practice and refine our virtual and remote learning. It's it's kind of, I mean, it was new for us. We've dabbled in it in the past, but for the most part, like I said, our teachers went through a ton of professional development, including, you know, our own experts in our building that were some of our best, you know, helpers on that. But we've been working hard to, you know, it's amazing how much growth teachers have shown over this time. You know, each day they tell me about something else they've learned or something new that they've learned. And like I said, that's made it easier for them, made it more efficient for the students. And so that's been great. The BUND proposal that gave us some new technology right before school started was also great for our staff so that we have state of the art stuff now. Some of the other things, like I said, the hybrid has plan has always allowed us to have the six foot distancing. So, you know, safety has always been the top priority for not only our students, but also our staff during this time. Our Oilers online program has also been successful. We kind of have an advantage being one of the larger schools that we can use our teachers. We don't have to use just a planned program like Odyssey where all the time, we can just take some of our teachers and say, okay, some of these Algebra I sections are all online taught by our teachers. And so that's been very helpful. We've kind of used Wednesdays all along the to practice for if we ever went virtually like we're doing now. And so it's kind of been a nice thing. If you remember right from our blue and gold cohort hybrid model, two days a week, they're face to face. On Wednesdays, everybody is virtual, and then each cohort has two days where they're in a remote learning, you know, category, usually through Google Classroom. Some of the things for second trimester that we're going to try to work on is, once again, I mean, student engagement is always a goal of teachers. What does that always look like in a virtual learning situation? We're going to work on greater student engagement in that virtual learning, you know, environment. We're also going to look at, you know, what are the classroom norms for virtual instruction? And we've been kind of working on that through our department coordinators. And then also, you know, online academic integrity and how does that look? How does online testing look? How does, you know, different things like that has been kind of a priority for us along with continuing to provide additional academic and social emotional supports. We feel like we've gotten kind of past the initial shock of what does this look like? How does this look like in a cohort and a, you know, virtual learning model? And now we're starting to get to some of the finer points of of educating back. And so it's been, you know, a nice start for us. We, like I said, are felt prepared to go entirely virtual now. If you want to flip down to the GI Tech, Jen, I'll talk a little bit about theirs also. The GI Tech's kind of a unique thing. They were going five days a week, and now they have the Wednesdays for virtual learning, which has been good. I mean, when you think of tech classes, generally they're hands on classes. And so the virtual world was not, you know, when you're thinking about construction and welding and different programs like that, it doesn't always lend, you know, that itself to being in a virtual setting. And so they have worked throughout this time to do some planning in case we had to go virtual like this by putting in Google Classrooms, and they're going to continue those, having students log in. They also have multiple districts that they have to deal with. And, you know, they kind of got a phase in last week because four of the schools, four of the surrounding districts around them that are part of our GI Tech Center went fully virtual. And so they kind of got the first taste of that. And then you can see we've also acquired some additional programs to help us with this online learning. And we kind of listed there all of the different programs that each each department's using right now. So it's been a good start for the high school and GI Tech Center. We're learning as we go along, but like I said, we have great teachers and great staff and great students. And so it's kind of made it easier for us as we go through, but still got a lot to learn. And like I said, we're getting better every day.
Thank you, Jen. The last program I just wanted to update you all on is the community education program. The WAY program is in the process for a second trimester of transitioning to more of a virtual program. As Kim reported at our last board meeting, they've been a hybrid program where they have had virtual learning and face to face. The face to face learning has been kind of toned down over the last few weeks, and they'll continue to do that. In the adult and community education programs, you realize, of course, after last week, they have several different campuses. So at their main campus, they are working on transitioning to virtual learning. And the Isabella County Correction Facility, they still do have one staff member that is going in and that is allowed to work with students in that facility. And then the day treatment facility, which is a partnership between the Mount Pleasant Public Schools and Isabella County Courts, is staying open right now due to Judge Black's request that he would like those students to stay in person learning. And that is between seven and eleven students and one teacher that's there. And then we also through that, under that umbrella, have two great start readiness programs that are housed at Rose Bush School, and they are in person right now. I want to talk about what's happened over the last, I guess, forty eight hours. First of all, just to look at some of our enrollment numbers back, when we first started with this presentation, I shared with you the breakdown of our face to face versus our Oilers online students for first trimester. And we were about sixty three percent face to face and right around thirty seven percent online. That did shift for second try, although maybe not as much as we had thought that it would. Based on our numbers and based on family requests now, we have about seventy four percent of our students that are requesting to be face to face, and twenty six percent of our students are still requesting to be a part of the Oilers online program. To date, our technology department has distributed close to fifteen hundred Chromebooks. And I should put a caveat on it, about six hundred of them are scheduled to go out tomorrow. So tomorrow's going to be a huge day for our district, but they have really knocked it out of the park with getting Chromebooks together, getting ready for students. Joe is just on a phenomenal job of making sure that we have what we need so that students will have devices in their hands starting tomorrow. We've been working on finalizing schedules, especially you have to think for a typical high school student, they could have a completely different schedule, not anything the same as what they had the first eleven weeks that started today. And we need to continue to look at an elementary schedule. At one point, we talked about offering one day per month that would allow teachers some additional planning and preparation time. We did have a schedule set up for that, that we were going to propose to you, but given the most recent events, we've decided to put that proposal on hold. This is a summary chart that I want to show you of our cases. So the purpose of this is to provide data with this, the data summary of our COVID nineteen cases that result in exclusion from school activities. So that would include any positive cases and anything that would have someone quarantining. So you can see just this breakdown. If we look at the staff side first, we currently have four hundred fifty six employees. That's everyone. That's our teachers, our administrators, our drivers, our at will employees, our support staff, our maintenance, that's everyone. Out of those employees, we have seven active cases. We have forty seven staff members that are currently quarantined, and the percentage of our staff with active cases is right around one point five percent. If you go to the student side now, this year, we're going to be able to count just right at three, three thousand five hundred students. We have eight active student cases in our school district. We have one hundred thirteen students that are currently in quarantine, and our percentage of students with active cases is point two three percent. I know that all along, I have been the person that has been, I'm going to say advocating to stay face to face, and my stance on that changed this weekend, and I want to give you some more information as to why. When we look at the increase in our school community and our community at large, what happened over the weekend, in my opinion, was 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 startling. We, from the time that we recorded our first positive case in our district, which was October third, until Friday, we had nineteen positive cases. Between Friday night at eight PM and Saturday afternoon, we had six additional positive cases. I was overwhelmed, and I knew that that was a tipping point for us. In addition to the number of positive cases we have, we have many students and staff members that are in quarantine due to being considered close contacts. And a group that I'm especially concerned about and that I've watched very closely, of course, is our transportation department. And we currently have five members of that department that are in quarantine. So when you have twenty two bus runs and you have five of those drivers not able to run, you all know what our subpool looks like. That's very alarming. I meet once a week with the Central Michigan District Health Department, and our takeaways, my takeaways, I should say, from our meeting on Thursday, the twelfth, was to keep our youngest students in school as long as possible. The health department believes that they will see an increase in cases after Thanksgiving. My understanding is that since this pandemic has started, that's proven true after every holiday, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, Halloween, there's been a spike in every holiday that we've had. And they recommend that school districts move to virtual instruction if they believe that COVID and COVID related situations cause a disruption to your daily operations. So that was what I had to battle with Saturday and Sunday. Fortunately, I have an amazing team of people that I get to work with and collaborate with. And so ultimately, we made some decisions. Last night, as you all know, the Michigan Department of DHHS issued an epidemic order that goes into effect on Wednesday. The biggest pieces of that epidemic order for us is that it closes all Michigan high schools for face to face instruction. It delays all athletic events, practices, and competitions. Most of you know, we are scheduled to start winter practices for wrestling and basketball today. We've already started hockey practice. We actually were scheduled to have a hockey game on Wednesday. Additionally, I know our our middle school sports have been practicing for quite some time, so delayed all athletic events. And then it provided additional information regarding social pods and social distancing. The idea of a social pod is a new idea to me, so I would encourage you to learn a little bit more about that, and that information will be shared on our website as well. Based on all of that, I am changing my recommendation because I have been probably one of the ones that has been fighting the strongest, I would say, to keep our students in school face to face, but I believe we reached a point where we can no longer do that. So already this week, we've announced that we will be all virtual for all DK twelve students from November sixteenth until November twentieth. Our administrative recommendation is that the board take action this evening and look at the weeks of November twenty third and November thirtieth and make those weeks also virtual for all students DK twelve. We believe that, of course, the week of November twenty third is the week of Thanksgiving. We only have two days of instruction scheduled that week. And then we believe if there is an increase in cases after Thanksgiving, that would occur towards the end of the week of November thirtieth. We would like to see if possible, if there's not a large spike, if we could return to in face to face instruction for the week of December seventh and December fourteenth. We know that that means that Mount Pleasant High School would not be permitted to return to the hybrid model until Wednesday, December ninth, and that's based on the epidemic order that was released yesterday. The weeks of December twenty first and twenty eighth are winter break, so no one would be in session regardless. Looking at potential behavior over winter break, we are recommending that the week of January first, fourth, I'm sorry, our first week back from break, we do a virtual week again. And then the week of January eleventh and beyond, hopefully, we are able to return to the model that we've used for the previous eleven weeks that we all believe has been successful, which is a blend of face to face and virtual instruction based on family preference. I know that going back and forth like that, actually, let me go back. I know that going back and forth could cause some questions and could raise some 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 concern for families, but we still really believe that our students learn best in a face to face environment. We believe that we need all of our students with us, but especially our youngest students. And so if we can get those two weeks in in December, we believe that'll make a big difference heading into the winter break, and it'll bring us more success as we go into January and into twenty twenty one. And I'm going to stop my screen share at this point. There are a couple of things that that we need to do. Certainly, we want to make sure that the board has the opportunity to ask questions of myself and any of our administrative team members that are here this evening. We need to then move into public comment. And then, should the board members so choose, you have the option of taking action on our recommendation if you'd like to do that this evening. So I know that's a lot of information.
Jen, I have one question.
Jen, I have one question. Would, when would the decision be made, or I guess, what would kind of be the parameters put in place? If we do have to call those two weeks in, in December? If, you know, we're hoping to be face-to-face, would we give families enough time or teachers enough time to continue in the, the fashion that they might be?
That's a great question, and that was one of the things that you noticed in the correspondence that we sent out yesterday. Is that we really stress the importance of families and staff still reporting to us their COVID-related situation. So just because we've moved to virtual this week and we're asking for the next two weeks to be virtual. We still need to know anytime someone is a close contact, anytime someone's in quarantine, anytime someone is showing signs or symptoms. That information still needs to be reported to the buildings, the buildings then report it to my COVID team here at central office. They're doing an amazing job of keeping track of everything. So that that way at a moment's notice, we can say, okay, we have this many staff members that are in quarantine. We have this many students, so then we can use that data. My hope would be that we would be able to look at that information and know by Wednesday, December second, what the next week would look like. You know, I, I mean, there are, there are some, some no-brainers for us. For example, again, I go back to transportation. We know that if we can't transport students, we have a problem. And if we have that many transportation members that have to be quarantined, that we can't run our regular operations, we're not going to be able to return face-to-face. So that's why that piece of it is so, so important, that even though we're virtual, we still need to continue following up, learning about close contacts. Doing all those things so that we have an accurate reflection of where COVID-related situations stand in our district. We also really have realized through this process that we, we are now more than ever partners with the Central Michigan Health Department. They are doing an amazing job, but they are so overwhelmed that right now we find ourselves, we are telling them about our cases. We are giving them our contact logs, where when this all started, for, for us, it started just over a month ago with our first case. They contacted us, and now those roles have switched. Where families are telling us that they've received a positive test result and we're sending the information to the Health Department. So we need to be able to continue to do that, so they can continue to track what's happening with COVID in our community.
I have a question about specifically the high school when we were listening to John's presentation. I, when you originally, Jen, were showing the two-way communication between teachers and students. It looked like the trend was decreasing significantly with high schoolers. Are you seeing a reason for that, or is there anything that you're going to specifically try to target now that, that they are remote?
Ours has went down a little bit, but we've also, like I said, brought some of the kids up. I mean, we had a problem that certain kids were not engaging at all. And so that was kind of the, in every class they've went through and, you know, we're not part of the two-way communication. Some of it, our data has to be updated, and so the most recent one, but that's, you know, for the most. Part ours had stayed relatively constant on there, so.
I, I do think that probably the actual accurate data is better than what the report shows, especially, like if you look at this. The last week, it shows only fifty-four percent. I, I do think it's better than that, but I also do think there's room for improvement. We know that it's hard to engage in a virtual setting, and so, again, our teachers are doing really great things to reach out to students. Our counselors are pitching in, you know, we're concerned about learning gaps. We're concerned about learning gaps at all, at all ages and all grade levels, but when you think about high school, they have the least amount of time to catch up. Right? And so we really need to make sure that they're not missing. So I, I think there's, there's areas where we can improve on that. But I don't think we're as bad as that data shows. And I will, I have Joe update, then I will send the board an updated report. I have to post this report on our website by November thirtieth.
Okay. And just one additional question. For students who have IEPs, five oh fours, special accommodations, anything? Like additional services, or how is that fitting in with their schedules? I, I didn't see any spots for those in anybody's schedule, so I was just curious.
Yep, so that would be during the small group time, that would be when they're meeting with ancillary staff, if they're eligible for speech or OT or PT. They're also using small group time to meet with Title One, with their resource room teachers. I don't know, Marcy, if you want to speak specifically to what's happening with special education, or Katie, or?
Yeah, we talked about how our resource room students, our MYSY students and our Title One students. All need to get some individual or small group instruction like they normally do. And so anytime in the schedules, that's what we were working on today, the teachers were going around, the special education teachers and title teachers. Were going around each grade level, looking at their schedule and picking out times where they could work with groups. So it might say on the basic schedule, reading lesson with Mrs. Schaefer. And then independent work time, like I kind of showed you, during some of those independent work times, title could be pulling a couple of kids. Or resource room could pull a couple of kids and so on. And then during the sections that do say small group, the teacher might have a few, but a Title One teacher might have a few of the others. And a resource room teacher might have one more, so we've got a few different areas in the schedule. That we can make sure our ancillary staff are all meeting with kids. That's the tricky part that we were working on really hard today to figure out, how do we make that work across the entire building? So it's still a work in progress in the next day or so, making sure we've met. Everybody's needs, but that's, that's what we're working on, and that's when they're able to fit that in.
I think the other important thing to remember is from MDE, when we shift to virtual learning. Every special education student has an individualized plan that goes along with their IEP. And I, what's the name of the plan, you guys? It's a re-something plan.
Contingency plans.
Contingency plan, thank you. So our special education department has worked on contingency plans for every student with an IEP. So those plans automatically go into place as soon as we shift to virtual learning.
Just to add on to Marcy too, with the recorded lessons, or specials are recorded, they're not live. For three-five, our science and social studies are recorded, so that's also a big chunk of time. A student could be receiving at-risk support, title, special ed services. And then they could watch that recorded video at a different time. So that special ed teacher could pull them at that point too. So there's definitely flexibility, what you're seeing in our schedules is a basic schedule of a gen ed teacher. But all of our support services, ancillary staff, special ed staff have their own individualized schedules. To make sure they're meeting their plan, IEP goals and objectives with kids, so.
Sorry, Courtney. I have a similar question regarding schedules, especially in the DK through to RC. I know at the beginning of the year, there was, for the online Oilers specifically. Some of these schedules weren't quite in place yet as teachers were working through. And I wondered if what you showed us today would apply to all students, right? Both the face-to-face that are moving to virtual right now and the online Oilers that have been virtual all along. If now we have something that looks a little bit more comparable to what we had. That make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense, I would say that the answer is yes. The face-to-face kids that are now jumping into that virtual are the ones that are going to be. You know, trying to learn the schedule and fit it in and, and all of those kinds of things and, and get used to it as a family. But our virtual kids, it's similar to what they've been doing, but I think there's a little bit more added in. And I think the, the difference will be now, their whole groups are going to be twenty-three kids or twenty-two kids. Instead of just their seven virtual kids. So there will be more children that they will interact with virtually now. And I think that it will allow for better differentiation when you look at small groups. Because there's, you know, such a wide variety of levels and needs that I think we'll be able to. Mesh those pretty well, and I think, I think we've got a good handle on what that schedule will look like. And I, I feel like it, it might be a little bit of a work in progress where we get started and we find out that. We might need to tweak something here or there when you're looking at that many. Because for my teachers anyway, they've all been blended until now. We haven't had a true online Euler classroom in my building. So I know Katie could speak a little bit more to that, but I feel like we've modeled our schedules after those teachers that have been doing this. The kindergarten teacher at Bowles that had been doing Euler online. Her schedule was one of our big examples that we used in determining what had been working so well for her. And we wanted to make sure that we were able to put those things in place for all of the other kids as well.
And so as a follow-up, and thank you, Marcy, that helps. I, I wonder what happens when the face, well, the face-to-face that went virtual today, then go back in the classroom. What happens to that schedule for the online orders that are remaining, can we expect something to remain somewhat similar? Since we, and it's some of the blended classroom that our teachers were dealing with.
I, I believe yes, the answer is yes, even though they may have, you know, a different teacher or whatnot. The DK two buildings, just like the three-five buildings, have really modeled their schedules very similarly. So that we are putting all of those important aspects into our schedule. We kind of came up with what are those most important expectations that we have and making sure that we had all of those pieces and parts in our schedule. So I feel like once the face-to-face comes back, that schedule looks like a normal day in the classroom too. But then the ones that stay online will be following that schedule, and like I said, they're similar across buildings. So I, I believe that it's cohesive, I think it should work out just fine when they switch back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jennifer, I kind of have a similar question for you for the middle school, right? The schedule that was distributed for the middle schooler was somewhat new. And that, that's not something the online owners had prior to this. If we can expect that to stay like this, when we go back to having some of that population face-to-face? Or is that something that is most likely going to go back to what the online owners have had so far, you see what I mean?
I do.
How much?
I do.
Families expect to switch.
Yeah, I, I can't answer for certain because Darby is not here. But the way the middle school is structured, they don't have teachers that are only teaching in the Oilers online program. And so my guess would be that it would go back to the schedule that has been used previously. But I can verify that and, and email you and let you know that. But if, if you just think about how like what Marcy's talking about, those teachers are only going to have virtual students, so they can continue to maintain that. Where that's why this schedule looks so different now, because middle school's teachers had face-to-face and online, now they're all online. When they go back to face-to-face and online, it'll, it will look different. But I, I will verify that and I can let you know.
And that makes sense, I just wanted our families to be clear on kind of what's going on in the next couple of months potentially.
Sure.
I have one more question regarding the, the time, those two weeks in December. I'm just wondering if the decision's going to be made as, as a district? Or if we're going to kind of take it school by school? I know there's been some of, some of the schools that have very, very few cases. I also recognize that the busing is something that impacts the entire district, and so certainly taking that into account. But I just didn't know if, if a school was doing really well and wanted to go back compared to maybe we had a school that had been recorded higher. Or are we going to treat it kind of as a district-wide decision?
So you know I'm not going to name any school that doesn't have any cases, because the last time I did that, I got myself in trouble and the next day they had a case. So I learned my lesson there. So I, I think that's a really good question. I, what I would like to do is, we look at the overall picture, is make those decisions by grade level. So, so my first commitment to get students back would be that K eight grade level. I'm relieved in maybe K five more than six-eight, but if, if we could get those students back, that would be, I think, where my top priority would be. And I think we see that in, in the message coming from the state with the idea that, you know, high school is going to be virtual for three weeks and that kind of thing. But I, I don't know to bring back one DK two building and not another. I, I, I guess there would have to be some really compelling evidence that would tell me that we should do that. The situation that we were in last week with Fancher was sort of an emergency situation, right? We didn't have a lot of other options, but I don't know that that would be my first preference. But so I guess I'll defer back to my favorite answer during this time is it all depends, right? It all depends if we really have a building that's glaring, that there aren't any issues, there aren't staff that are quarantined. And we can transport and we can feed and we can run our regular operations, and then maybe that's what we would do. But my preference would be to bring grade levels back.
As a follow-up to Amy, I worry about making a decision tonight about December seventh and fourteenth week. Considering the uncertainty of the pandemic and the delay that we do see in these spikes following holidays. It might be a decision like, I mean, if I, as a, as a, you know, parent, I would want to have as much knowledge as possible. And if I know I have to plan for two weeks remotely, I'm sorry, two months remotely until January eleventh. So a little bit of a different situation that if I'm thinking, okay, just three weeks now. And then, oh, wait a minute, an additional two weeks? And so I don't know if, I mean, I, I think that should be part of our decision tonight is to think. On, you know, how can we best help our families out there, knowing that we all would love them back in our buildings? But also with the uncertainty that we're dealing with.
I, I understand that completely, I also know that not all families have the capacity to care for their children when they need to work full-time. And so my thought was, if we could get them back in school for two weeks, that would also allow parents to go back to work and, and that sort of thing. But, but I understand, there are so many unknowns with this pandemic. I guess my recommendation is really just asking for the option for me to be able to look at that data during those, that time and say, okay. We can go back or, or we cannot go back. We won't have another board meeting between now and then, so that would ultimately have to be a decision, sort of like we made yesterday where I consulted with the board. But I made the decision. So, but I, I definitely understand what you're saying.
So Jen, I wasn't thinking about the parents working, that's definitely a variable play in there. And, and whoever else might have answers for me, not just Jen. So in my mind, I'm playing it out, and the debate is. Obviously, going from virtual to face-to-face and back to virtual is disruptive. And there's a lot of change that you have to do and getting back used to the, to the procedures and everything. So that disruptiveness, I think, is going to delay learning and, but the reality is, is everything's kind of disrupted right now. So on the other hand. Finding a way to, I guess, kind of roll with the punches and, and to adapt is also a, a good lesson to learn too. For the students. So I guess I'm just trying to pick your guys' brains some more pros and cons between the, the two options. Because that's what I'm kind of seeing is, is there's disruption on one side. That would suggest maybe we should just, you know, just stay online until we get through the holidays. But then the other side of it is, you know, you got to learn to adapt and roll with punches, so any other thoughts on that?
Marcy, Katie, John, Linda, Ginger, anybody?
I can say, Brandon, I'm going to reiterate what Jennifer said. I have had numerous parents in tears on the phone saying, I don't know what I'm going to do for this next couple of weeks. I have to work, I don't have anyone to watch my children, or my children have to go to grandma's house, or my uncle's house, or so-and-so, they don't have internet. I don't, I, I don't have the capacity to pay for that. Or they'll take their Chromebook over there, but I don't know if anyone will be able to help support them. And I can tell you, you know, like I talked about at my level DK two, they can't really do a lot of it independently. And so we really need adult supervision. And that's just been a struggle with families that have to work. And I, I just, I really reiterate that, what Jen said, I, I think that is a hardship for a lot of our families. I have families that are homeless, they don't even have a place, so they don't have internet. They're trying to figure out where are they going to go during the day. They're trying to figure out where are they going to go during the day? So I, I feel like that problem is bigger than what we even realize across the buildings.
Again, that was my thought because when I saw the health department's recommendation was to keep the younger students in school as long as possible. Is there any way we can keep the younger, the K through two, the K two, five in school even? You know, I mean, did we need to take them out this week even? I mean, do we have the transportation and the staff that would have been able to keep the K through five open? You know, throughout unless something happened. That would then, you know, cause that's the, the parent population that gets hit the worst. And those are the kids that are affected by the transitioning the most. So would there be any possibility that we could treat the K through five differently than the rest of the school?
Yeah. So right now, yeah, so right now every K five building has at least one. Some have two classrooms quarantined, except for one building. There's one building that doesn't. Every K five building has multiple staff members that are in quarantine. I honestly don't know where we stand on transportation from the last update that I got with five drivers in quarantine. So when I looked at everything this weekend and when we met as an administrative team, we thought that we needed, we needed to do that. It's just the staff cases are escalating right now. So for our younger children, they don't necessarily, they're not getting sick. But I think they're probably spreading COVID. And so I, I feel like that was the right decision. But I don't know, Katie, Mercy, I mean, obviously Fancher sort of, we had another bigger issue there. So Katie, right now she's got a large number of staff members that are quarantined. I think that that would be a challenge. So I, that, that's why we made the decision that just it was every, when I mapped out all of our buildings, every building had a major impact. Except one of our K five buildings, which I'm not going to name. And then our alternative ed program. Those are the only two buildings that didn't have a major impact. And of course, alternative ed is largely online anyway.
I know as a business, which I don't know if that's the same as the school. If we have a case or we have anybody, anybody close contact has to go into quarantine until they get tested and come back negative. Is that, is that how it works with you? Or do they have to just stay in quarantine for so many days? Or does a negative test allow them to come back?
The health department's guidance to schools is that they have to quarantine for 14 days regardless of a negative test result. So there are people in our district that have been on quarantine, have gotten a COVID test, have a negative result. And they are still quarantining to finish their 14 days.
And I think maybe to add to that conversation and, and maybe continue what Brendan started. We also have to consider it from that yo-yo perspective, right? I mean, if we look at the middle school red team, and I know it's one that has had more exposure. But that constant yo-yo back and forth, it's got to be brutal on both students and, and teachers. And that's, I guess, part of my worry as well for the December weeks, although I fully, I get it. Like I get that for parents, it's extremely difficult to find support, to find, you know, to work to, with young children and, and to help with that distance learning. I really don't want to diminish that, but I'm also really concerned for the safety, right? If we say that safety is really one of like number one, right? We want everybody safe. None of us want our teachers and students to get sick. And I do worry that, you know, in, in those models, it's really hard to guarantee our teachers' safety inside our classrooms.
I would agree with all of that, Aulene. I think that that's where my main concern lies is that I, I agree, our young kids should be there. I wish that, that it was an easy answer. But I, I also feel like there's more than just our students. I think that we need to, you know, keep our teachers and our other staff really, their safety is just as important. And I think that that, that really needs to be reiterated with whatever decision we make tonight.
So yeah, for the most part, everything about the schedule and your recommendation, I, I, I support. And obviously we don't have another board member. So we would have to give you the, the ability to make that call when, when it's time to make the call. I just would reiterate that I think the least amount of schools going back and forth, you know, you'll yo-yoing the better. But after, you know, reconsidering the health department's recommendation of keeping the young ones in and, and understanding what Marcy was saying about, you know, the troubles at home, I, I get that for the younger ones. But maybe, maybe the older ones, we can just keep them virtual until the end. But I think you, you'll know what decision to make at times, so.
I really have to tell you that, you know, all along I have sort of wondered like, how will we know when it's too much? There's just, just so many unknowns. And I got to tell you, I knew on Saturday, I knew I was like, I, 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 it just, it, it just was too much. Like I just, we couldn't keep going. I knew we couldn't keep going. So, you know, I appreciate putting that trust in me, putting that trust in our administrative team. And I also appreciate that it is challenging to go back and forth and families need to be able to plan. There are just too many unknowns to know what the right answer is. And so, you know, I, I appreciate your guidance and your feedback. I just, if, if we can keep them with us, we know it's better.
Jen, after reviewing all, everything we got presented, presented tonight, I, I feel really confident in the fact that you've considered all of these angles to the best extent possible. And that's where you landed with this plan was trying to come up with a balance that was tolerable for everyone. And still having an educational delivery model that you can actually deliver. And additionally, I'd like to say that as these programs have been continuously improved and matured. I mean, I, I feel pretty comfortable that the effort that's gone into, I don't know, reorganizing the entire way we deliver education in the district. And then continuously improving it. It, it will support the model that you're, you're looking at or the schedule you're looking at implementing. And kids, they're, they're pretty, they're pretty adaptive. You know, I mean, it doesn't, it didn't seem having, having several children quarantined, it didn't really seem to impact them that much. Moving from online to virtual or to face to face. So just, I mean, my own experience tells me that it's, it's probably harder for the parents than it is the kids. And, you know, and I also agree that, you know, getting them back or keeping them in school as much as possible is really important. If nothing else, for a lot of the supports, getting kids in front of mandatory reporters, meals, et cetera. I will lead this into actually a couple of questions for you. I'm assuming that there will be meal programs continuing pretty much in the same model that there have been delivered at this point through this period of change.
Yes, we, we are working on the details of that. Right now we are, we are hoping by Wednesday, we will have meal distribution at Ganyard and at Mount Pleasant High School. Those are our two sites that have been approved to distribute meals. And we'll be able to distribute multiple meals at once. So students and families, depending on what they want, will have breakfast and lunch. They can get up to seven days worth of food. So we have a couple of issues happening with our food service program with the brownout at Mount Pleasant High School this morning. Because when it rains at Porres, they lost some food in the coolers at the high school today. So they're recouping that. And they have a couple of staff members that are quarantined right now. So we're working through that also. But yes, our plan, that's why we don't have detailed information out to families right now, because we're still trying to finalize those plans. But we will be doing food service and we'll, we'll get that out to families just as soon as we know all those details. And that will continue. The other thing is that we want to make sure that all families know if we are able to go back to face to face instruction or if you're in Oilers online program, we're still going to be able to offer multiple meals to every student free throughout this time. So however we go with modes of instruction, Wednesday will become a large distribution day. We'll, we'll be able to offer multiple meals.
So I think you, you've always done a very good job of trying to anticipate what the problems are going to be with, with anything that you've been required to do as we've moved through this. Do you have any anticipation on, on challenges, any major challenges that, that the, the schedule that you proposed will cause? I mean, I, I know you can't solve everything and you don't always know everything. You do a pretty good job of looking at, hey, this is going to cause this problem. We know we have to work on it and solve it. What do you see coming down the pipe with this over the course of the next couple of months?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think exactly what we're talking about here is the transition too much. Is it too hard for students, for our staff? Do we have enough staff to be able to run and function the way we want to be able to? I, I think that those are the biggest unknowns that we don't know moving forward. I don't know if families will travel over Thanksgiving and over the winter break. And if they do, I don't know how that will impact what we're able to do. So there's just so many unknowns with this. But I do, that would be my concern that the transition back and forth would be too much. Although I do agree with you, I think kids are very resilient. I think our teachers would be able to handle it also. So I, it's just the unknown.
So what I think is my last question, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, John. I'll wait until you're done.
What I think is my last question is what is the impact going to be to staff? Like parapros or bus driving staff that are only required when they're in, when, when kids are actually going to be face to face, at, at least to some extent. But, but maybe less, less required than, how are we handling that?
So that, that is one thing that we're working fast and furiously on as well is a redeployment plan. Michigan Department of Education says that we can redeploy staff to meaningful work to support our plan. And so we're working on what that looks like, how we can support our students, our teachers. You know, we have lots of employees that have school age children. Can we work with them? We have needs for getting technology ready. We have needs for food distribution. So I'm looking at ways that our staff can meaningfully help that our plan and support what we're doing right now. So we don't have all the answers. We don't have all those things figured out, but that's, that's what we're working on.
And my last, my last is a comment, not a question, I promised. I, I really like how much that these plans you've had have matured. I know we struggled quite a bit with the K through two. Excellent job to the teams that have taken the time to work on those and continuously listen to lessons learned and feedback from the families. And continuously looked at ways to make the best changes to those programs that are the least disruptive. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm still stuck on that December seventh and fourteenth week. And this is where I don't know how board meetings work. Is there any way, if you don't want to carry the burden of making that decision, Jennifer, on your own? If we can have a special, whatever they're called, like a special board meeting where we put that, if we want to schedule one before, so we can keep the decision for them when we have more information? I don't know if that's possible, if that would help our families, but that is one thing I was thinking about.
We have the ability to do a special meeting at any time that we shall choose whatever we need. So if that is something that, that superintendent feels that we need to do, we can have that. But I think that that's one of the things I like about the recommended plan is it gives a template for the future. Knowing that it may change, but it gives the parents the ability to project into the future with some relative certainty of what potentially would it will be like. I think by holding back and not making those choices out that far is much more difficult on families. So if I have an hourly job and I have to tell my boss, you know, my children are not home because they, the schools are virtual. And he'll say, well, are you going to come back? And you can say, well, tentatively, they're scheduled to go back face to face on these days. So it, it's giving people steps and a roadmap. Granted, it can change, but it could change tomorrow. I mean, that's the beast. And so that's why I like what's being recommended. It is a projected plan that we know that could change. And we know data will change quickly. However, I would be quite surprised to see plummet in the COVID rate in our greater community. So our numbers within our district are very low, but in our greater community is getting very high. I have a lot of friends in the medical fields and they're saying it's getting dangerously high. And so I think if anything, we need to plant the seed that as a community, we may not be able to go back. However, it will be a balance. And so I think communicating that to the families is important. But I think in general, knowing the waves that Jen was talking about earlier, that we've seen in the rates in the greater community. At times with those waves, and so it may be well to align it. I think it's a value to have that communicated to the families because we're giving them throughout the holidays to the rest of the calendar year, a general plan. With the caveat, it still can change. But I think everything we do now is, it still can change. That's why I like the, the structure of a plan. Personally, I don't think we'll be able to, just knowing how high and how quick the virus goes. And the virus doesn't disappear that fast. It takes a long time for it to start to disappear. So I have a feeling that I would trump more toward it, not us not going back to face to face. But I do understand the incredible value of going back to face to face. So I, I like the recommendation, the way it stands. But knowing that we do have options, Aulene, so we can meet at any time and help make those decisions if we so choose. We do have to notice that we can do, and the public would be notified, it would be a regular board meeting. But we do have mechanisms in the Open Meeting Act to step in and support the administration at any time.
But thank you for that clarification. And I, I do feel that, I mean, I agree with you, you stated if, if we give the caveat in the communication, you know, that looking at the numbers, if possible, it would reopen in December seventh, knowing that it, you know, it, looking at the greater community looks very unlikely, but things again can change. And those decisions could be made at that point does, to me at least, make sense.
So I don't know if other board members have questions or if we should move to public comments?
So I just, I want to make this really quick, but John's last, last question really just got me thinking. That redeployment, I mean, could you just speak about that more? That's interesting to me.
Yeah, so, so just so that our staff members, I mean, obviously if you are an instructional staff member, you have instructional responsibilities that you're working virtually with students. But if you're a paraprofessional, if students aren't in our buildings, you have less responsibilities. So our paraprofessional staff can work with our instructional staff to support their lessons, to help them filming virtual lessons, help them with grading, to do those kinds of things. But then there's also other needs that we have right now. For example, tomorrow when we're distributing close to 600 Chromebooks, it will literally be an all hands on deck kind of day. So anyone that can help with that distribution will be there. You know, when we do distribute meals, again, all hands on deck, anybody that can come and help distribute meals, we'll do those kinds of things. So we're trying to find meaningful work for our staff to do so that they can work and they can continue to earn an income.
Jennifer, along those lines, and I, I know we do want to move to public comments, I'll, I'll keep this brief. But I was actually wondering what's going on with our teachers right now, considering we're virtual? Do they have to report to school? Knowing that from the executive order, if you could do work from home, you should, right? That was kind of what was stated. Are they staying home to work or are they actually coming back to the buildings?
So that right now they are still working in the buildings for, especially today and tomorrow, as we're planning and we're getting things together. I am meeting with the Teachers Association tomorrow to discuss that further and to discuss what our expectations will look like. So that if teachers are working from home, they have clear expectations. One of our biggest concerns is that our teachers have appropriate technology from their home setting in order to be able to work with students. The fact that we do provide that appropriate technology in the classroom and not all of it is mobile. And when things are moved often, that's a good way for things to break. We want to make sure that we're careful in what we do. Our letter of agreement does speak to allowing teachers to work from home. But we've asked them to come in and help us as we're planning and distributing materials today. So we will have more information in the next two days, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did attend a Miosha. I did attend, yeah, I did attend a Miosha webinar today about that policy and about how that works. And there are some sections of that where schools have to follow. And there are some sections where schools are also exempt. So it's just sort of wading through that and making those best decisions. But as a paraprofessional, your options to work from home are more limited than they would be as an instructional staff member.
And so what happens if we end up having to be virtual? You know, even those two weeks in December, but really, even if we're not those two weeks in December, there's a lot of virtual days, you know, on deck lined up. I mean, is there a possibility that we run out of work and these people have to go without pay? Is there?
If they are willing, if they are willing to work, we will find work for them to do.
Interesting.
I have a question, and Tim, this maybe is, are we, are we making, are we having any action happening tonight? Or are we waiting till after public comment? What's the process for that?
After public comment, we, as Jen mentioned earlier, it's up for us to make a decision and how we want to react to that. Again, we had already made a plan for the second try. So my recommendation would be in action based specifically on the recommendation that Jen ended her presentation with, but we have to do that after public comment. So I'd recommend that we go to public comment at this time and get some feedback that's okay with everybody.
So if we're good with that, I'll just tell members of the public that are joining us for the meeting this evening. If you will go ahead and raise your virtual hand, I will unmute your microphone and give you the opportunity to speak. And we do have a couple of people that have already done that, so we'll start now. So Allison, are you there? Allison, are you there? Tomas, is that you? Okay, I'll see if I can go on to the next person. Hannah, are you there?
Hi, I'm here.
Hi, we can hear you, Hannah. Go ahead.
Okay, so I was curious, you had mentioned that you were asking families to report still when they had COVID. So when it comes to returning to school in those first weeks of December, are you going to also be looking at, you know, the case rates of the community at large, especially the percentage of case positives and hospitalizations? Or are you just going to be considering members of our district? Did you get all that?
We did get your question, Hannah. So typically, the board does not answer or respond to questions. So we're just listening to the information, so we're not, this is not a question and answer format. So if you want to share, comment and share advice or recommendation on what you think you should do, we should do, that would be great, but it's not typically a question and answer format.
Okay.
So do you have comments regarding what you feel data we should look at or?
Okay, sorry, I didn't know if I was still unmuted.
Yep, you're good.
I guess that is just my concern is that I see our county rates going up. And my observation of small children is that they're not as aware of their bodies. So, you know, they will play through the pain if they're having symptoms and whatnot. You know, it's more than likely they're not getting tested. My mother is in healthcare. She's actually a nurse on a COVID floor. And hospitalizations are so through the roof in Midland that they've had to extend their COVID floors. So I guess, you know, just seeing that and really, I'm just really concerned that there's more cases in our district that we actually know about. And especially after the holidays, you know, those cases might not even present until that first week of December when we've made our decision to come back. And I guess that's my greatest concern is that if we're not looking at the whole data of the county and if we're only looking at our district, we may be very well unaware of how many positive cases are floating out there in our district.
Thank you, Hannah. Allison, are you there? Katie, are you there? Katie, can you hear me? Amanda, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can.
Hi, so I am a parent in the district and a teacher in the district. And I actually happen to have one child who's in quarantine and a spouse who is in quarantine. And then from a teacher's standpoint as well, I'm just a little nervous about the back and forth of those, that week and a half or two weeks in December. Honestly, I would love to see us returning January 11th. You know, my parents or my children have indicated to me that it's hard going back and forth, back and forth between virtual and face to face. And these are high school kids. So again, it would be nice to see us go back January 11th.
Thanks, Amanda. Let's see, Andreelle, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, so I'm a special education paraprof at the middle school and I'm in the MOSI room. My concern is special education students especially have difficulties with transitions. And this is a lot of transitions we're asking of them. And I have to agree with Allison that I think maybe going virtual, even though I know that's not the best option because, you know, our students need the face to face. They need that contact. They need that hands on for learning. But health and safety of staff and students should be the priority right here. And I just worry about how many physically aggressive behaviors we're going to have with the students with the back and forth that the schedule proposed right now is.
Thank you, Andreelle. Chelsea, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Great, so I just want to say that my daughter just got back face to face. We've been struggling with obvious mental health issues with my daughter, like depression kind of issues, and she's only nine. And it was clearly obvious that she was being cut off as an only child from her friends, from everybody. And the week that she's been back face to face, we have seen a 360 change in her. I mean, I understand what we're having to do now because of the health concerns. I get that. I care about the kids. I care about the teachers. But my kid needs to be as much face to face as possible. And I think that this plan that Jennifer has presented would be a really good plan, even knowing that it could change, obviously. But I need my kid to be as face to face as much as possible. She really needs the interaction with the teachers. She really needs the interaction with her peers for her mental health. And I know that I'm not alone, you know. And in addition to that, I'm one of your substitute teachers too. So when she's online, I can't sub. I can't, I can't be available. So obviously, if everybody's online, you don't need subs. But then that means that I can't work at all. But if part of it's online and then part of it's not, you know, I'm stuck at home and I can't even help you guys out in any way, shape or form, volunteering for the school or doing anything either. So that's another concern too.
Thank you, Chelsea. Abby, are you there? Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Awesome. I'm a teacher in the district as well. I teach at the high school in the resource department. And I was just wanting to echo what Amanda is saying. As much as I would love to be face to face with our students, as we know from the research that this is the best, I am really concerned with the amount of transitions that will be had. I've had a couple of kids move from Oilers online to hybrid and those students ended up not earning credit in my class, actually, because of just one transition. So I really worry about even transitions throughout the trimester, especially with January and February. I know that's like far in the future, being really heavy on sickness anyways. I wonder if we should move just for the whole trimester to keep things both consistent and safe from flu and COVID because, I mean, last year, we almost had to close because of the flu.
Thank you, Abby. Next, Dr. Ford? Dr. Ford, are you there?
Yes, hi, sorry.
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, this is Amy Ford. And like Chelsea who spoke recently, my daughter has also returned to face to face instruction after starting off online. And she also needs social interaction. And so I value the decisions that are made about safety first. And I understand these other considerations related to needing consistency. But I'd also like to emphasize the value of designing engaging synchronous class sessions for the online learning experiences that kids are having. When she was online at the middle school, the learning experience was predominantly individual work, asynchronous, working alone. And so I'm really glad to see that the middle school has scheduled one synchronous class session per day, per subject, for each of the five subjects, these Google meets that are scheduled so far. But I'm wondering how many students are going to be in those sessions and what kind of social interaction among the students is going to be afforded in those sessions. And specifically, I'm wondering if there can be either more than one session offered or if the teachers can orchestrate, say, breakout groups so that kids can talk to each other and just have a few minutes a day for each subject, being able to engage in socially interactive, meaningful learning activities that are designed during that time to maximize their learning. And I think that would help address some of that socio-emotional learning that the district is committed to and address some of those mental health concerns that we all have about our kids going online for an extended period of time. And I realize that doesn't really solve the problem of families who need to work, who don't have childcare. But it would make the online learning more manageable for those of us who could keep our kids home but are choosing not to because our kids need that interaction. So perhaps a tiered system could be offered during this interim time where the learning is online. But perhaps families who are unable to keep their kids home could send their kids to school to do the online learning there, which is something that other districts across the state are doing. So that's an idea I had.
Thank you, Dr. Ford. Ashley, are you there?
Hey there, Jen, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Yep, go right ahead.
Hey, everybody. It's so lovely to see some familiar faces. A former teacher in the district, current CMU employee. Was not planning to speak, but I was really enjoying some of the comments that were being made and just appreciate all the work that all of you are doing, Jen and board members alike. And just, I guess, ask and echo and appreciate some of the comments that have been made. As far as the December 7th dates go, you know, deciding to return face to face, I guess I would just advocate that whatever decision is made, that it's based on science. You know, and really based on what is happening within our own community as far as the spread goes. We know that it's like Tim mentioned, it's going up pretty quickly in our community, especially even on CMU's campus, we're seeing quite a bit of that. And I think that just knowing what we know about the incubation period for COVID, the timing is not going to be great for when that decision for December 7th is going to need to be made. Because really, you know, the post Thanksgiving spread and cases, you know, those are going to just begin to come to the surface right as that December 7th return to learn face to face could be happening. And then we could find ourselves in a situation more like last weekend, Jen, where it was super stressful, obviously, and it ended up needing to be more reactionary and less proactive. Whereas right now, I do think we have an option to, opportunity to be more proactive for families. And I think ultimately, whatever decision is made, you know, the more in advance we can communicate, obviously, the better. It's not ideal to say we're going to be virtual till January 11th, but at least if we are able to make a decision like that, families can prepare for that. And ultimately, just maybe iron out that if a decision about the December 7th is not going to be made tonight, you know, what are the parameters in which that would be decided, right? Like what's the factor, what's the deciding factor on whether that's going to be face to face or not? That's all. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Ashley. At this point, I don't have any other community member that has raised their hand. So if there is anyone else who would like to make comment, please go ahead and raise your virtual hand. And I can unmute your microphone. Maria, are you there? Maria, can you hear us?
Oh, sorry. Hi there. Good evening, everyone. I am the mother of an online student in seventh grade. And, you know, this transition that the school is going right now, it doesn't affect us because he's still online. We keep online this semester, this trimester, sorry. But I just would like to share that when he learned that everybody was going to be online, he was very excited that he was maybe going to be able to talk to more kids. And I think that the comments that Amy made earlier about creating situations where the kids could communicate with each other will help them tremendously. And I hope that teachers, as they go to their professional developments and they are learning, they are able to include that. I know that there are too many strings to handles by teaching face to face and online. I don't want to be in anybody's seat doing that, even though I'm doing that myself on my work. But I hope that they are able to create more situations where kids can communicate with each other because the isolation is hard. I also want to recommend, I don't know, my recommendation as it was, but I want to echo what the previous person says, to make decisions based on the science. It's very hard. Everybody's having a very hard time. And there are families that are being hit more than others for personal situations. But we need to keep the focus on what the science recommends and also on the well beings of the staff and teachers that are taking a big toll, not just by getting the virus or not, but mentally. So we need to take care of that as well. And as community, I think that that is very, very important, if not the most important. Because if we don't take care of the teachers and all the people who works and try to make this working, it's not going to work for anybody. So whatever decision you guys make, consider that. Please don't forget what is the recommendation and what is the trend, right? Just, we know what's going to happen. We know that after every holiday, there is a spike, there is a big spike right now. And we know, even though we want to be optimistic, we know that it's not going to be, to get better soon. So considering coming back in December, I don't think it's on the plate. considering uh, coming back in December, I I don't think it's it's on the plate. And based on the trend, it's not based on my personal opinion, but so consider that, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Let's see, Allison, are you there?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thanks for hearing me out. Um, I am a CMU faculty member. I am a parent of a kindergartner and a spouse of um, a special education teacher in the district. And I just want to say, you know, I appreciate everybody's opinions. I'm not opposed to going virtual as long as we need to, nothing of that sort. I think I'm just concerned as a full time employee of another organization that we just consider uh, what it's like on that, like the oppositional side. So just considering that teachers are able and willing to have the ability to work from home if needed, based on the situation. I I certainly know that you guys are considering how teachers are the te- I'm sorry, the children of teachers are being helped during the situation, that's appreciated. Um, but just can the consideration of the full time employees in terms of spouses. So that's all. But thanks for all you guys do. I certainly appreciate everything. Thanks.
Thank you, Allison. Let's see, Betsy, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
One thing I haven't heard discussed about the going back and forth is the tech center kids. I'd really like um, there to be some thought about them possibly being able to remain in person through these times. They're separated from the rest of the building, but how do kids learn online for construction and auto? And you know, lots of these other um, subjects, you know, an online format, just it doesn't work. It's not, um, they're not reaching their goals. And for a lot of these kids, this is the replacement of college. This is getting them ready for life. Um, and they're not, they're not going to get their needs met virtually. Um, so I haven't heard really much talk at all about them. So I would like that to be a possible option to let our tech center students remain in person through these other shutdowns. Thanks.
Thank you, Betsy. Melissa, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Go ahead.
All right. Hi, I'm a parent of a kindergartner and a fourth grader. Both are in balanced calendar and we have not heard mention of that this evening. Um, I guess our concern is with what happened last spring is that we got thrown into the traditional calendar and we don't want to see that happen again this time, especially with an intercession and a planned break for next week. So if we continue to go virtual, especially January, are we going to be thrown into the traditional calendar again? Because that's not something that I'm sure a lot of balanced people would be interested in. So just something to think about.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yep.
I don't have any other community members that currently have their hand raised. Is there anyone else that would like to provide comment at this evening's meeting? Um, if so, please go ahead and raise your hand.
Hi, Heidi, can you hear me?
Um, I am a parent of a child in the district and I'm also a social worker. And um, I would just like to encourage um, the district to explore. I know you have a lot of staff who work in the building who won't be working during this time when things are virtual. And I would like to encourage them to explore. Um, as some of the other parents have mentioned, that social interaction and breaking out into teams and classes, perhaps some of those pair of pros could host Zoom meetings or go to meetings with students in smaller groups to allow those kids to have that social interaction that they so desperately need during this time.
Thank you, Heidi. And again, I don't have anyone else that has their hand raised. If there is anyone that would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand. And I will unmute your microphone. Tim, I guess I'll turn it back over to you then.
Thank you, everyone. And we appreciate all the comments that the community has done, has spoken. Um, I'm sure some of those Jen can, there's already responses for some of those pieces that um, um, the questions that have been raised. Um, but in general, um, thank you. Um, does any board member have any questions or comments that they would like to have now that we've heard public comment?
Well, I think there's a pretty uh, clear message here to really do everything we can for social interactions for online kids. I mean, I I think that was the case for the online orders, the first trimester. Um, it definitely is something I heard and I've seen personally. And I think as the whole district moves there, uh, to find ways to combat the isolation, to really make sure that that social emotional needs are met as best as possible, I think should be really something we discuss and try to see how we can address. Um, I um, I like some of the suggestions that were made tonight, and I know those are things that were considered already. Something like having our pair of pros help with these. Um, I I think that that suggestion of um, having our buildings be a place where virtual learning can happen might be worth discussing. I'm not sure that's an option. But that's something that I personally had never thought of. And I wonder if we can discuss what the pros and cons. I mean, I think that might create a lot of issues logistically. Um, but it's it's an interesting aspect for the kids that, you know, really need or can't stay home. I'm thinking especially our little ones to have virtual learning happen at the school. Though I guess I don't really know how that would work, uh, but I I would love for us to discuss it, even if it's just a few minutes.
So you're talking about bringing students into the school, like all students or any student, or I I guess I'm not sure when you say virtual learning happening at the at at the school. What I can tell you is that we have been working with our building administrators to target certain groups of students. So there are several districts across the state that are working with special education students or with students that are in their bottom 10%. Um, I know Marcy spent quite a bit of time today looking at what she might be able to offer for developmental kindergarten students so that we can bring students in um, for small groups. Um, to just bring students in to socialize, while I know that's that's important, I I feel like we maybe would be better suited to find a way that they could virtually socialize and not bring them in the buildings. That sort of defeats the purpose of you know, social distancing and that kind of thing. Um, as an employer, I will tell you that I do have a commitment to my employees to be able to have that support for their children. So we've worked with a couple of different buildings so that the children of our employees, we have a very young staff with a lot of young families. They can bring their children to the buildings and we're trying to work that out on a case by case basis. That's not perfect because then we still have people that are being exposed and exposing others and and that sort of thing. So I think we're open to that. Um, but I I feel like if it was just the idea of feeling isolated and that sort of thing, perhaps that would be something our counselors could take on and offer more social, social emotional learning through a virtual method rather than a face to face method.
And and Jen, that makes sense. And thank you for addressing it. I think it's good for our community to hear what's happening as well. Um, and I would really support more of that social emotional support. I know my own third grader started having social emotional support once a week on Wednesday for half an hour, and it seems like such a small time. And it makes an immense difference. I think these, at at least the third grader and my sixth grader doesn't. Uh, and I think anything we can do, especially now that the whole district is online, could be, you know, something that really does matter. Uh, and I know, for instance, when I saw the plan for the K through two, one of the first thing I noticed is that there isn't right now that kind of built in socialization. I know it's hard. Um, but if we if we can, you know, keep that on our radar, as we keep improving these models, we're all learning. Um, I would be the first one to say a few weeks ago, really half an hour makes that big a difference? Uh, and to see it in person, I think um, it really does um, seem to matter. And so I, maybe that's something we can kind of keep building.
Any other comments? I would just like to make one general comment regarding the data that we are using to make these determination. And it's very holistic and it's very broad. The health department is very good at having very accurate information in those conversations that we're constantly having with them. So um, don't feel that we're just looking at one very small piece of the pie. Um, we understand that we're part of a greater community. So does the health department. Um, there are many pieces of information that go into these decisions and not anything very focused. Um, there's a lot of good data. It is getting easier and better to see that data. Um, but the health department has done an excellent job at calling that, identifying it, valuing that data and communicating that to the district in our area because they're all part of our community.
And Tim, if I could
Another comment I just would like to make is, um, we just also have to remember that, uh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, if I could just comment on that, um, you know, I I work very, very closely with the health department. I have regular meetings with them twice a week. Um, I I have almost all of their cell phone numbers. We talk all the time. So um, I just want to make sure that our community knows that we're not not making decisions on a whim. We're definitely looking at the science, at the trends, at the progression. Um, we are also not looking solely at what's happening in the Mount Pleasant Public Schools. We're looking at what's happening in Mount Pleasant and in Isabella County as a whole. I'm also looking at what's happening in our different regions that we're affiliated with. So with Greshett, Isabella, um, also with the Saginaw Valley Conference. I've been working closely with the superintendents from Midland Bay City Saginaw Schools. Um, and then certainly the Middle Cities Organization, which is an organization of 40 school districts across the state. They are more urban districts, so they tend to have situations hit them harder. But that often tells me what's coming to us next. Um, so I I don't want anyone to think that we're not using science and all of the detailed information that we have from across the state to make these decisions.
Thank you, Jen, for that recap because it's very important. It's the hard decisions to make and one of it is, there's a lot of information that needs to be done. Um, are there any other comments that any of the board member would like to make regarding the public comments or regarding the um, the recommendation?
I'd like to speak on um, the recommendation. I I hearing, you know, some of the teachers speak up, I I really don't think that planning to come back for two weeks makes any sense. Um, I don't know if now is the time that we could keep talking about it, if we want to keep talking about it. Um, but I I would like to make a motion that that would be different than Jen's recommendation.
Well, do we want to talk about that um, that structure of having that that two week coming back? Um, or 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 not? Um, my thought is it's not a, it's not a cemented decision. It is a framework decision. Um, so um, I think there's too many variables to know at this time for us to make this decision now. Um, that's just my thought. Does anybody, other board members have anything regarding that two week opportunity slot in the month of December? Tim, I would agree with your comments. Uh, we, there's so much we don't know, but we do need to have a plan at least uh, in that we can try and work to that that parents and families can at least try to plan for what we know today.
Um, I tend to agree. I I also want to point out what with pride for what we've done is that most of the K, all of the cases have not been centered from the school, it's been bought into the school. I also say that, look at the small amount of people, luckily not seriously ill. We haven't had anybody hospitalized. So I think as a district, we've been very trying to be very on top of it and very careful. So I think we've done a great job and I think that that we've made the right decisions, as hard as they are. And I think to leave that option open because things are so fluid and you've obviously been making the correct decisions as we go, that I have full faith that if you see a trend or you don't feel comfortable, or the staff does not feel comfortable, that that call will be made accordingly. But I also think that we need to leave things open in case you know, things change and things aren't going that bad, that that parents have an an option open to them because there's a lot of parents out there who really it is very difficult for them not to send their kids to school.
I certainly don't want my hesitation with the weeks to come back in December taken as anything. I I am very proud of of the, how little of numbers we have had as a large district. I think it's phenomenal. And I'm impressed by everybody's hard work to make that happen. But I I believe that we we have seen that trend that's showing us, okay, we can't do this. We can't keep having these teachers here exposed or potentially exposed and then quarantining and two weeks here and two weeks there. I just think this like back and forth is so disruptive to not only our students, but our teachers. I mean, at the middle school, the, you know, the teachers who have had to quarantine and come back and trying to go back and forth, it's impossible to get those kids back that first week. I mean, it it takes them an additional week or two to come back from already missing two weeks. So that's kind of where I'm coming from, is that I I just feel like the disruption that's going to come from that doesn't really make sense to even plan for it. I mean, it it makes more sense in my mind where we're at right now, where the numbers are in Isabella County. Where kind of teachers feedback has been is that that we move to be remote through January 11th and then re, you know, reconvene at that time because who knows where we'll be.
I mean, I I do think from a science point of view that it is extremely unlikely that the numbers would allow us to come back. Um, I mean, again, like I understand the the option of leaving it open, but just realistically, I mean, it's tiny. Um, and if that changes how teachers can plan, um, you know, to keep it open and increase their stress with that small of a chance, not sure it's worth it. Um, I mean, I do understand the reasoning for keeping it open.
Well, and I just my feeling the whole time was not going back and forth would be the better decision. I think piece of information that makes me comfortable going forward with recommendation is that the health department is recommending that we keep uh, the little kids in as long as possible. Um, so I would just look at it and say that, um, you know, that's where I'm at. If we got to keep the middle school and the high school at home, um, don't hesitate at all to make that call.
Jen, I know when you um, talked about your last conversation with the health department, it was prior to the events that took place over the weekend. Is that accurate?
Yeah, so I talked to them um, Thursday afternoon. Um, and that's when we looked at um, the percent positive testing rate in Isabella County. Um, Dr. Morris is our medical director, but she's also the medical director for several counties, um, much larger than just central Michigan. And so her continued advice was again, that we do keep students in school as long as possible. Um, she did believe that there would be a spike after Thanksgiving. I think we all know that just based on what we've already experienced. Um, so for me, the biggest difference was the number of positive cases that we received as a district over the weekend. Um, I believe that's partially due to one of our largest local testing sites having a large backup in their lab. I think they were catching up this weekend. Um, and so I I feel like I'm, that will slow down a little bit, but that for me was a tipping point where it was so many in one day. Um, but I don't know that those numbers would make a drastic difference in Dr. Morris's recommendation. Um, when we did decide to have Fancher go online for two weeks, um, I did consult with Dr. Morris at that point as well, because for both Katie and I, it felt like things were sort of escalating and we weren't quite sure what the best recommendation would be. And Dr. Morris came back very quickly and said, if you're comfortable with going virtual for two weeks, that's what I recommend. that's what I recommend doing. So I feel really confident in our relationship with the health department that they're going to tell us what to do. Another piece that she did say on Thursday, which I think is interesting, she is concerned that the more schools that go virtual, the more taxing it will be on our healthcare systems, not because of patients in healthcare, but because parents work in hospitals. And so if parents can't go to work, there will be greater demands on our healthcare system. So she was sort of using that analogy when talking about our youngest students also. So again, I just think that I want to have a plan. I want to be able to say to families, this is what we're looking at and this is what we're doing. I'm incredibly concerned about our families. We know that the better than 50% of our students are eligible for free and reduced lunch. We know that we have a large number of children in our community that are living at the poverty level and our families just don't have the resources to support them. I'm concerned about taking their ability to earn an income away completely for them for this long of time. So that's that's probably the biggest reason. I feel like if we say we're going virtual for this whole time, there's no going back, right? That is what it is and we're locked in. If we say we've got this three week period of virtual, possibly two weeks back face to face, and then we know what the next three weeks will be, it does allow us a little bit of flexibility to look and see where we might be. And I certainly understand that there's a slim chance, but I'm an eternal optimist and I'm going to hang on to that slim chance to see if we might be able to bring our kids back. So that's the whole rationale behind my recommendation. And I know in meeting with my administrative team on Friday and again on Sunday, I felt like everyone was really in support and certainly we've got lots of members here tonight that could tell you that as well, but just to give families a glimmer of, hey, we might be able to come back and if we can, we're going to do that is important.
Jen, how does this affect the balanced calendar?
So balanced calendar at this point will go on as planned. Thank you for asking that, Sheila. Next week is an intercession and we do have some changes that will be proposed with the intercession schedule. Again, you have to remember that next week is only two days of instruction, just Monday and Tuesday. But Mrs. Falsetta and Mrs. King will be sending out information to those balanced calendar families. So at this point, we don't have any plans to change the balanced calendar schedule. That's a great question.
I'm wondering if we might consider, as we're talking about this, because we were hearing a lot from the high school teachers and we were hearing some things from that. What about if we look at it as we know kind of the middle school and the high school? The high schoolers, according to the state, can't go back even till that middle part of the first week. What if we don't put it as a consideration? We just say straightforward, they're going to be online until January. However, the elementary, because you were talking about it like per grade level, we would be willing to consider with our K five group, we would be willing to look at that with our numbers, having very detailed numbers. And I think we have to look at the community, not just within the school district, as what those look like from that kind of standpoint. But then I think at this, so at this point, if we looked at it saying only K five that we would consider for those two weeks to allow some type of reprieve if possible, and we realistically know it's probably not going to be the case, but then the middle school and high school plan accordingly, they're going to be online until January. We just know that it kind of works with what the state's saying. It's saying they're just a larger group.
I'd be okay with that. I mean, I think it's it's kind of a compromise here. And I do, I mean, I get it like with the uncertainty. If keeping things open means that much, then we can. I just want to make sure that we think it through and think about our teachers in that option and the stress, you know, it does put on them.
And I would I would support that as well.
Would that ability just be available if we accepted the plan as proposed? And Jen, you know what we're talking about, you know what we're thinking? If we accepted the plan as it was proposed and gave you the latitude to adjust as needed based on the information that you have, knowing that that is something that a good good amount of the board supports just in conversation here. It seems to me that leaving it open and leaving it up to, I'm giving you the latitude to make the right decision. You've already proven to me anyway that you've made the right decision based on the information every time. And that I have a lot of faith, especially with your communication that you give to us, even this over the weekend, looking for input, that I think I can trust you to make that decision, the correct decision with the latitude and accepting the existing plan.
I really like, I'm in agreement there because I think you're in contact with the people, the administration and the staff. And I think the input that they give you really play into everything, which is things that we don't have on a daily basis. And the second thing is, I think if it's that bad, the state's going to come out and not give you a choice, that the high school is going to be closed anyway. So I think that may be taken right off the table as it is. So again, you've heard our concerns, but I am going along with John where I'd like to give you the leeway of your staff and administration. You guys have proven yourself and you've been innovative and creative and done so much in such a short amount of time that you have my full faith and confidence at this point.
So at this point, I think we've had enough time to discuss all of the variations and kind of the thoughts. Is there anyone who would like to put a motion forth to help resolve this based on the recommendation that has been provided?
I would, Tim. Help me if I don't get it quite right. I would like to move to accept the approved or approved the schedule in plan that has been presented to us and give the superintendent the latitude to adjust as needed with the caveat that constant communication with the board about these decisions and feedback is is part of that decision-making process.
Thank you, Jen. Just wait one moment. Deb, are you all right? Yeah. Is there a second for that motion?
I'd second it.
Got that? Okay. There's a motion in a second. Are there any further questions regarding the motion?
I just want to make sure I'm clear. So if, so we, if we go with this, that means that the plan as proposed moved forward and that if anything changes, we get consulted. Is that okay?
I hope I, I feel like I've consulted you all every step of the way and it's that's always my, I mean, my first email, every situation is to the board and I hope, I hope you know that.
Are there any other questions regarding the motion?
Just one follow up. When will communication be tentatively planned to decide on that two weeks?
I think the very latest we could go is probably that Wednesday before. So is that, I can't really read my calendar, if there's that December 2nd? I think that's, that, I mean, does that seem reasonable? I mean, that gives families-
The Wednesday before is December 2nd.
I understand too that, you know, that will be probably at the very beginning of the Thanksgiving spike, but I will be able to talk with the health department and have that information at that point, too.
Any other questions regarding the motion? Not hearing anything. So there's been a motion in a second. Don, roll call, please.
Willeen Pangle.
Yes.
Amy Bond.
Yes.
Courtney Stegman.
Yes.
Brenda McQueen.
Yes.
Dama Zirkovich, yes. Sheila Murphy.
Yeah.
Kim Motterkirk.
Yes. Motion unanimously approved. Thank you, everyone, for the conversation. Thank you for the community supporting and asking great questions and bringing up great ideas. Jen, is there anything that you would like to, about the COVID-19 at this point section of the agenda?
No, I don't have anything else to share at this point. I will update the reconfirmation report and I will send it to you with updated information prior to submitting it.
Next item on the agenda is any citizens' request to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda item. Is there anyone who has anything that we haven't already discussed that would like to have comment? As Jen always says, please raise your hand. Not seeing anything. The next item is any board member who has anything that they would like to discuss at this time? Is there anyone who has anything? I have one item. I would like to extend the thank you on behalf of the board and the greater community for the members who ran for school board. As you may remember, we had an election not that long ago. And I want to extend a thank you to Riley Justice, Willeen Pangle, Tyler Markkinen, Robert Zarovsky for stepping up and trying and being a partner with the district and being willing to be a voice for the district. I'd also like to congratulate Deana Cockins and Jessica Drenigan, who were here this evening, listening in. I mean, welcome to the board. They will be sworn in on January 4th to our board and they will become board members at that time. Brandon, it's coming close to the end for you. John is coming close to the end for you. But we have one more board meeting in the month of December. And so I just wanted to say thank you to those members for stepping up and running on for the school board. And it's it's an honor for to be on that ballot. Anything else from anyone else?
Tim, I do have one question. And it doesn't have to be followed up on here, but at one point, we had discussed the ebb and flow of state funding versus how our expenditures work. And we had discussed the possibility of looking at a line of credit to help float times where the funding doesn't come in in time to make sure that all the finances work out correctly. Have we done, it doesn't have to be answered here, but I just don't want to lose track of that item. But I mean, if Ginger, if you if you have done anything with that, I just wanted to bring it up and ask about it.
Yeah, we did look into that about this time last year when we were, this is always crunch time where we're already constantly monitoring our cash flow to ensure we won't have an issue. We are lucky in a sense that for this month and and next two months, I think at least, we don't have a three payroll month. That's always where we we come into big problems. We're monitoring that. We did reach out to our financial advisors a year or so ago now. And line of credit is an option, but it's not a great option. There's a lot of different paperwork and different caveats that need to be filled to ensure we do that correctly. As we're watching it though, if we do feel like we need to borrow money, we can quickly go out to bid and solicit those to our local establishments, our local banks, or we could always work with borrowing from our state aid loan fund also. So we have a couple of different options, but we are definitely monitoring that closely right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So just kind of give everyone the next steps in the board meeting. So this is the time of the year that we do the superintendent's review, or I should say we complete the process for the evaluation for the superintendent. Jen, per the Open Meeting Act, has the right to ask to go into closed session to have that done. And so we will be going into closed session to get to finish up her superintendent evaluation in the process that we've learned through Michigan Association of School Board. So board members, we will do, we have to do a motion in a second and vote to go into closed session. At that time, you were sent another link, another Zoom link. So we will step out, we will close out of this Zoom meeting and we will open the new Zoom link for the super evaluation discussion with Jen. And then we will have a conversation at that point and move forward. Technically, we can't adjourn this meeting until we finish that meeting because then we'll have to go back into open session. But we will just do that, all that through that second Zoom meeting. Anyone have any questions regarding the process? So again, we will do a motion in a second, go into a closed meeting. Deb will document that. We will close this meeting out, open this new Zoom link, have that closed session with the superintendent. And then at the end, we'll do another motion to go back into open session and then end up the meeting at that time. Any questions? Is there a motion to go into closed session? For the evaluation? I think Sheila-
I'm moved, Sheila. Yeah.
Second?
I'll second, Amy.
John, roll. Any questions? John, roll call, please.
Willeen Pangle.
Yes.
Amy Bond.
Yes.
Courtney Stegman.
Yes.
Brenda McQueen.
Yes.
Dama Zirkovich, yes. Sheila Murphy.
Yeah.
Kim Motterkirk.
Yes. Motion to approve going to closed session. Again, we're going to close out of this meeting and open the new Zoom link. Thank you, everybody.